Anybody need a full packet because I made it one extra copy?
I do.
There you go.
I don't have your detail on my printer.
Okay.
There's a.
I do, I have this in there. Guys, we're already done everything, but. Many things.
Seem to me he answered you.
We didn't have to turn over the packet.
I'm looking for Joshua Keel.
All right, we are.
If I could hear.
We are recording. All right. The one announcement to make, just so you all know. On the website, the Clearwater Township website, on the calendar, if you click on the date of the meeting that you want to join the Zoom meeting for, it will give you the link. If you went to the bottom of the page, we just fixed it, but if you went to the bottom of the page, it automatically sent you to the Planning Commission meeting. So that is why people have been trying to get in the meeting and couldn't get in the meeting because they were going to the wrong meeting. And I was starting this meeting and kicking them out of that meeting. And they were getting frustrated and I was getting frustrated. So that is why, and I think we fixed it, but you have to go to the date and click on the meeting for the one that you want to see on the Zoom. So I can tell you all that, and then you can tell everybody else that's trying to get onto the wrong meeting right now. Now we're ready.
Okay. I got, I got the seven oh one. Call the meeting to order seven oh one. Please make sure your cell phones are muted or turned off and you'll be joining me in the pledge, please.
The pledge of allegiance. But we have to say this is not everything. Your requirement for sustenance on the nation on our behalf. The end of this. The voting for these in two thousand four. Call and recognition is.
Brad Bradley.
Here.
Albert Keys. Tom Backers.
Present.
Joanne Childs. Christine Johnson here.
We will add the agenda. We got a few changes.
Last change I would like to make to the agenda, the underneath reports number eight. I'd like to switch Public Safety Committee and head of the Sheriff's Department contract to you.
Okay.
So C would be D, B would be C.
Jennifer here today too.
Actually, I have a technical placement of that on Thursday.
GFA. Okay. Like just after the clerk and treasurer report, we will move Public Safety up to item C. And then D would become GFA. That would be Parks and Rec and then. Sheriff's report would be moved down ahead of the road.
I don't know if you got the note, but I added to, I guess I would put it under Parks and Recreation, a ride around torch request for using the pavilion over.
Oh, for the pavilion?
Yeah.
Uh, yeah, cycling club.
Yes.
CD cycling. And basically we donate the use of the pavilion.
And under contracts, we don't have the GFL spring cleanup contract.
I do have that and I was gonna add that.
I have, I have the contract and I think I was something out to everybody. It just wasn't on the agenda. Did you write it down?
Right, uh, write that in under C contracts. So first things, we'll get the contract out of the way first.
Yes.
Yeah. GFL for the trash cleanup thing.
And we also have the Heritage Committee request. I don't know if we actually approved their request to use.
What's that?
Or is there something that we? Okay.
Yeah, we should have that.
Earnings for the ball field?
No, for the use of the, to have their request.
I thought we did that.
And we talked about it, but I don't.
Yeah, I'm sure we.
I don't think we approved it.
Okay, well, we're redoing. So basically the use of the township ball backyard. Uh. Uh, under the GFA grant apps resolutions. That would be, that would become B. And that's, uh.
Where is that?
Use of the hall grounds.
Oh, okay.
Anything else? I noticed I had the minutes wrong again.
Yeah.
To be approved.
That's all right. It is on the last page of those minutes. It does say Heritage Committee would like to be added to the agenda. So that's. So it wasn't done. It was just added to the agenda.
Okay, so. So approval of the agenda has amended.
Second.
All in favor say aye. Close. Okay. Uh, public comment I put on the front, we got a lot to go through there. So if you can hold your conscience again, that would be appreciated. But if you have something that you can get off your chest.
Oh, it's just hitting the top of a car out there. It's fine. It feels good, actually.
Uh, yeah, just anybody have any conflicts with what's on the table?
Well, I might have a problem with. So I hear which park, um, help. And that would be my, um, my stepson. So everybody know that may be a conflict.
Well, we have to discuss how to handle that anyway.
I don't know if it's personally.
No.
For you, it's, I mean, it's family.
Basically, it's personal financial. Well, it does include family and.
Okay.
If we hire him as an employee, then we might have issues.
Oh, okay.
Okay, uh, so. Squidward, it's public comment again. Moving on, guest reports, special order of business. Let's get Joshua Keel up here on the veterans park. Situation.
Yeah. For the follow along with what I'm saying.
Are we?
It's got some pictures in there along with the documents.
Yeah. I do. I've got everything in order. Are we skipping the minutes and jumping to that reverber? Are we skipping the minutes and going down to Joshua? Is that?
Yeah, I want to get him in and out of here and then we'll do the minutes after these.
Okay.
I want to find out if this is costing us any money.
Yeah.
So, uh, basically is the package all you wanted to?
I, I, I'd like to do a brief rundown of the.
All right, I can give you five or 10 minutes here.
Yeah.
Stand up and.
Okay, um, my name is Josh Keel and I'm here to talk about the veteran park at. It's five to nine four, I'm seventy two months. Um, I just wanted to give a brief overview on it because I don't think, I mean, I didn't even know about it until three years ago. So I think probably lost it. Um. Park was acquired in ninety six. It. It was actually a piece of legislation that was conveyed to the township for a dollar. It's an eighty acre park, so it could be one of the largest parks in the fantastic towns. And in two thousand and six, it was leased to the Michigan Research and Heritage Foundation. They were supposed to put in a Michigan Research and Heritage Center that was supposed to benefit veterans, a bunch of walking trails and. I think they're educational center. The, the, the plan is in the packet in here that they have set up. Um, in two thousand and eighteen, they put in a big cement flag that you might have seen driving through seventy two. Um, and in two twenty eight, twenty three, they painted. There are pictures of the flag. It's not great. There, the cement work is terrible. The paint job is just as bad. It's, it's in little rough shape. Um, and in twenty twenty one is when I come up. I started researching, trying to find an engine I could. Like who, who was running it, what, what project was, what was going on? I finally found the foundation and asked for permission to clean up the road because they've been pulling in there. So I cleared a bunch of trees from the road. I asked them if I could start cleaning up some of the trail and ask them if they would be open to the government, putting in a disc golf course on the west side of the property because the, the topography is really extreme. So they had no plan for like forty acres to the west of the facility that they were building. And they gave me permission to survey and design over the last year. I've cleared the road. I cleared a small parking area and cleared about one and a half miles of hiking trail. It's not, it's flagged, still needs a lot of dirt work. Building signage, all of that sort of stuff. Um, but last year is when I asked them to do this and I told them I should get the trail in in a year and then we could start talking about clearing things for the disc golf course. And I'm gonna go to them say the first stage of the planning. So we should move on to the next stage. The parking lot needs expanding. I'd like to clear undergrowth for the disc golf course. They hopefully have a fundraising tournament at law rate so that we can get baskets by next summer and start opening up a fundraising tournaments so that we can actually have a memorial for the fiftieth anniversary of the Vietnam War. Because that's the other sign that they have at the side of the road is it says fifty fifth anniversary of Vietnam. Um, that's next year. The issue is that they have no funding, no staff, and they're essentially incapable of prioritizing the services potential progress with the park at all. I mean, in the last year, I've made the park more acceptable than they have in the last eighteen. So I would like the board to reassess their lease or reset the lease agreement. It's supposed to be reevaluated every five years. I think it has been.
I know, I guess.
I don't think that the foundation is upset. Think they've been flying under the radar because they know that they're in. I mean, we're supposed to have built, started a building. They're supposed to be maintaining the trails that they put in. They haven't done any of that. They did at some point in the early two thousands, put in the road and did the preliminary clearing of the trails, but since then, there's been nothing. And in that packet, you can, there's a picture of the lawnmower with a trailer in the bush, and that's what I've been clearing for the last year. So I know that they haven't been fulfilling their obligation. I'm gonna keep volunteering, but I want to see this happen. My mom is an Air Force vet. She served for ten years, so this is something that's near and dear. So I'm, I'm really hoping we can at least get this park accessible because it is a huge asset for the community. I think it could be a huge asset for the veteran community too, if we relax and.
So I know these people who were in violation of the, the lease quite a while ago.
Okay.
So. Who's paying for this? Was supposed to be paying for it.
They are supposed to be surviving the funding. It says in their lease, they're supposed to.
It's just a DNR or just.
Um, Michigan Research and Heritage Foundation. Is what the.
And at least, we've got it for a dollar.
I know.
Okay, then we subleased it to them.
Right.
The only contact we have with them is every five years when they come in. To renew their lease, okay? The last five years they came in and they wanted to deal with the law of the property off and take the funds for themselves. Well, if you look at the agreements with the state, anything that's made there belongs to the state. So they basically haven't heard from us since.
And I know they logged it.
They did log it at some point.
Yeah.
Many years ago. And when I went to them, I suggested a law lake, a law lake tournament for the fundraiser for the park. And they said, yeah, well, we can take all that funding for the foundation. And I was like, no. I wanted to go to the park specifically, not. But here's, because I don't know what they're gonna use it for.
Here's, here's my question. They broke the lease. So it reverts back to us.
It should, in my opinion.
Yeah. Okay, so in other words, we can, we can assume this eighty acres if we want. But basically do something with it outside of the heritage. Whatever that other pop that is, right?
I would say that you still have to adhere to the legislature and the original terms from the state, but as long as you do that, then yes.
Well, basically we go back, go back to legal with a question. All right, they've broken the lease. What do we do now?
It has to be for public use, I know.
Right.
But that's the reason I was putting in the hiking trail.
That's been, yeah, that's been. It leaves.
It took them five years to paint that flag after they built it, so.
That was supposed to be ceramic, huh? According to. But that was years and years ago. Anyway, so. What are you asking for now?
I, I just want to be able to continue doing what I'm doing. I mean, I, everything I've done up to this point has been volunteer and I've been using my own resources and my own money to get, get the stuff done. And I really just want to see the park used. I would love it if the if we could stand by the idea of the disc golf course because I think that that could go towards funding an actual veteran center there. I think that'd be very cool, but. I just, I, I want something to happen to be utilized by the community.
I've taken the radar for a long time.
Right.
Um, I would suggest maybe you get together with Parks and the Heritage Committee and, and figure out actually what we, do we want to assume the responsibility for building our own park?
Right.
All right, and that front Stegmont Lake, you have, uh, basically, I don't know if it's a beach down there. I didn't go all the way down the.
It's on the hill, so.
It's on the hill.
And so you have an incredible view of.
Right.
Lake Stegmont.
Well, we don't own the shore.
But you know.
The legal, what road and seventy two, you know, as they come.
Behind us.
And the. And I think the legislation is talking that they're supposed to work in conjunction. Yeah. Question about that. So then we would be reaching out to them, I think, as well.
Okay. So basically we need a game plan.
I have a question. Have you considered having that thing signed by Jack Burman?
I, I have none because, I mean, basically I just, I kind of fell into this. It was like asking too many questions and then ended up involved.
I mean, he's all in favor of helping the veteran.
We can, we can do that. I can, I can.
I think the first step we should do is contact Mitchell.
Right. So. See what, uh. First of all, I know they're vital. They did buy the lease long time. Okay, so the lease is active. But again, we have to deal with the legislature basically to assume control of the property. Yeah, that's.
We need to find out how do we gain control of whether they throw the lease or not.
When it comes to the logging, I'm thinking back and I think the township had that wrong. We'll have to.
We had these and dead trees.
We had.
There was a lot of logs taken out there.
We, we paid the forester from. Andrew County coming here and.
Okay, uh, so the legal, uh, basically legal takeover.
Oh, there's, they, there was definitely law. I mean.
Yes, there was a lot of.
That are this big that are just there. There's like the stumps there, but there's no trees.
I believe it was fall.
For the sheriff, I think.
Yes.
A law was asking legal about them breaking the contract. So I would, I would also ask them getting real point.
Weird point.
Yes, let it say like a new foundation or.
Sublease it.
Yeah, sublease it again.
Okay. And a new sublease.
And I will look in my records and see what I have. I don't even know if there's a file on it.
Most, uh, yeah, I've found the original documentation he sent with the house bills and the actual lease agreement.
And I think the plan from the foundation was approved at some point. So that's why I sent that to you guys too. I think those are all the official documents that I can find. So.
Okay.
Well, I personally want to thank you for the.
Yes.
Your word here is. It's, it's been rolling around in the back of my mind since I was on the planning permission. But that was.
I don't really see a problem letting the gentleman work, work it. Why this is all going to be.
Oh, no. And, uh.
There. Two agreement signed already for, uh.
I think I.
Liability, okay.
Okay. Like last year.
Okay.
Yes.
If, if. Yeah, just a liability waiver.
Yeah, I said one to a little bit earlier that we want that to be guys or not.
Okay.
If any group of dogs want to go and walk. There, there's the map that I gave in the, the white line in the map is a trail that you can walk. There's not a, you're not gonna get like tangled up in it. It's flagged. Um, there's green flags on the upper loop. That's a little easier. The blue flags are, it's a little more difficult of a trail and there's a creek down there that you probably don't want to cross unless you got some serious boots on. There needs to be like.
Okay, so.
A hundred foot.
The original intent was Betterman Memorial.
Yes, they're gonna do an eighty, eighty three memorials for each county and state. Which I was considering my proposal for the disc golf plan. I did incorporate that idea to have a five veterans memorialized at every hole. One from Telkassen at every hole and then eighty two from the other towns. So point for the rest of it. So we did kind of adopt some of their ideas.
So going through this, does it, I mean, does it have the name, official name of Veterans Memorial Park?
I, they called it a Patriot Park.
Yeah.
But I don't think there's an official.
Because in order to get any funding out of, uh, the fence, there would have to be a better reported apart with it, so.
Right, that, that might be another question in the first. We thought, I don't know how you officially name it.
Right. Yeah, so a new sublease and an official name.
Oh, and if you, I did, I, I did finish the design for the disc golf course. There's a, there's a in the brand, but if you wanted a better look at the, the design for the disc golf course, you can go to udisc.com and look up Patriot Park. You can go hole by hole. It'll show the topography and all of that.
Their plans going forward are basically to extend the nature trail and, and basically punch over this golf course out in the brush.
Out of the brush, yeah. I don't want to take any substantial trees. I mean, if you know anything about this golf, the trees are like the best part. So um, all the, the undergrowth for the holes, I want to, I want to clean up. I already have a volunteer that wants to help clean some of the brush up, especially off the top of the hill so that we got a better view of Lake Stegmont. And I want to expand the drive or the.
So if you can get any volunteers out of Parks and Rec or the Heritage Committee, then, then they would have to also sign some liability waivers, but you can get a word through out there.
Yeah.
I've got it.
Oh, yeah, I had, yeah, we, we, I did a tour with.
Yeah, any questions to have?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, first, uh, Mr. Supervisor, sorry about that. Uh, the first thing they need to do is, is provide, uh, proof of insurance. Because in the lease, it does say that they are supposed to provide proof of insurance for, before anybody can actually work on that property. But I did say, but.
And we did that. I, that was a question I did ask the foundation and they, they said that they had insurance and that they were a five oh one C three with insurance. That's what they said. So.
I was just a little bit, it was directed to you personally. So as far as, uh, insurance need.
Well, otherwise now it's liable for everything that happened.
Right. Okay, so we need to get an insurance question.
But the foundation did say that they had, had insurance for the.
Volunteer.
I don't think you said, I didn't say.
Liability.
Yeah.
Right, we did kind of go through.
Well, his, his waiver of liability too.
Here for the.
With the liability.
Have a separate organization or entity or even work.
But it's not a commercial contract that we hired.
I just sent everybody a letter from the insurance company about something else that would cover that.
Okay, anybody have any questions too? Or we move on? Thank you, Joshua. I appreciate it. We appreciate it. Okay, now we can get to the minutes.
Oh, okay. There was a nine amendment ago, so it'll go away fast.
I know. Okay, February fifteenth minutes. Believe I, I read those when I published.
Yeah, yeah.
So.
You did.
Anybody have any amendments or corrections additions to the February fifteenth minutes?
I have the commission to approve the minutes from February fifteenth as presented.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Close. Moving on. Uh. Uh, STR.
Yep.
Okay. Basically, that was another, uh, we went through article five, I believe.
I don't even remember where we stopped.
Was. License required. We didn't get into the particular. So anyway, a synopsis of that was basically, uh.
Motion to approve March second.
Second.
Okay.
Do envy you.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Okay, move on. Haven't done a synopsis of that yet. I'll put that.
We don't synapse that. There's nothing.
I know. Well, basically, uh, we did nothing. Changes. And I do have it recorded, so. Okay, uh, legal reports. I refer you to the letter in response to our request for a form of vote. We pay for all the payments. I don't know if you had a chance to look at that. So I, uh. I did all, I sent an email to, uh, the Township Legal requesting, uh. What do we do next? You know, basically, uh, the options are collection agency, judgment against her uh, or putting a lien onto property. I did not get a response in time, uh, to do that today, so. I have, uh. I'm at a loss here. Um, I would assume. Yeah, I just wait to, and I did make a phone call today, but he was tied up, so I didn't hear back from. Uh, on the West Settlement, um. Basically, that was, uh, oh, I just wanted to make sure that, uh, they paid the amount, which evidently they did. And, uh, we have to, uh, basically figure out how to, uh, install that into our next year's budget.
We already added it into the budget.
Okay, so I was thinking of moving that to the twenty ninth, but the twenty ninth hasn't been approved yet. That's the last available day in March. It's a Friday, uh, to, uh, get our budget approved before the first of April.
Did you have that on here later? Did you have that on here later?
That's down on here later. Yeah, approval date. So I would like to move that to that meeting.
Move.
No objections?
Yeah.
So this will be moved to the, uh.
Form revert.
Budget approval meeting.
Are you talking about the?
Uh, yeah, if I hear something from legal, I'll add her on there. So we'll move both. Okay, I mean, I did that spark. So now we're looking at, uh, reports. I mean, the treasure, well, treasures.
We have the legal settlement under Township Board Control on the budget. We put that settlement in there.
Okay. Yes, but we, uh, we don't, we don't know how we're going to pay it.
Oh, okay.
We're going to pay it quarterly.
I believe that was the motion that was made that we pay it quarterly.
Yeah, we need a date to start, so. Anyway, we'll figure that out on the twenty ninth, uh. Treasurer, financial reports, bill payments.
That's you, Joanne.
Got the. Fun balances here somewhere.
Well, you also have the treasurer.
Your table, right?
Yes.
I've got a short report here to make.
Okay.
I did that. That's my.
Board members.
This is.
Twenty twenty-three tax season is closed with Tony on Monday, three eighteen. Credit card payments were activated during the winter tax season. You bitches at first, but pretty well utilized and warmly welcomed. Two point eight fee for the taxpayer when used, no real complaints. Point and pay is working on credit card acceptance in the office for rent, land use and so on. B S N A online was activated as well this past, past tax season. Complaints of being a bit cumbersome to use, but people are getting the hang of it. Reducing email inquiries regarding tax amounts from title companies and taxpayers and so on saved a lot. Very nice for the township in regards to email response times and so on. Would like to see more users use the online access rather than ask for receipts. Go for next year's to have a computer set up in the office for taxpayers to use to look up and print their receipts. We already pay for paper and printing, hoping to phase receipts completely out and make it more taxpayer controlled. Damn, Michigan class has been amazingly easy to use, very satisfied with all aspects of investing through them and keeping our bank accounts within the range for insurance purposes. Remote deposit capture was amazing. We need to check on the fees overall. Biggest hurdles this season were printed checks. Taxpayers hand ready could be horrible. The mountain writing doesn't always match the numerical amount, so that gets a little investigation there. Remote reader cannot read sloppy checks and wrongly written checks utilize a great deal of time and patience to find. It's my difference.
Also, uh. When, when the border review, uh, all your taxes went up. I'm sure everybody noticed that. Uh, border review, uh, period was last week. And, uh, the assessor, uh, basically the five percent increase that you saw in your property taxes. Uh, basically, uh. Is not appealable. It's capped. The reason for the five percent is that the previous year, previous two years. Uh, the property values in Clearwater Township rose over thirty percent. Okay, and, uh. That's, uh, basically a side effect of something else we're trying to cure. And the state caps the increase per annum five percent. So you can expect again. Next year, we end again until they catch up. So, uh, just wanted to let people know that. So it's sort of a legal amendment. Right? Yeah, so, uh, the cap is five percent. They've still got a way to go, uh. This past year, residential properties increased about eighteen percent, commercial nineteen percent, and agricultural twenty percent. So, uh, that's where we sit tax wise and expect your taxes to grow. Okay, uh, now we're at the third.
So, uh, because the treasurer's report is always the end of the previous month and we're three weeks into the new month, I gave you a fund balances that is current. This is from today at the end of the day today. And I will, uh, go ahead and if you. Like this, I will. Present this every month so that you know where we're at current.
Well, before we do the tax thing. I'd like to see the tax bond there go.
Yeah.
We're carrying two hundred nine thousand dollars.
No, no, no.
It, yeah, that's, that's at the end of February, so it's not, it's not currently there. And I didn't put that on. I didn't put the tax fund on here. Okay.
And that usually takes place in a couple of months. We've been told to keep a little bit in there. Before we, that's was by the county treasurer. In case there's any.
So that should be expected. Okay, so you do want the tax fund balance on here. I just. As the clerk, I don't usually deal with the tax fund, but I do keep it up, so. I will make enough to add the tax fund to that.
Yeah, that, that's all been dispersed.
Mostly. Well, there's still a little bit in there.
Well, yeah, but I mean, February twenty ninth is last.
Yeah, yeah.
So.
And then any questions on your expenses by vendor detail report? That I sent to you if you have it or if you don't have it, it's in you.
Fire fund. Sixteen hundred hours. That, that finally the D and R grant that showed us.
I think it might have been, I think so. The Sigma deposit. I believe that's what that was.
Still looking for ninety thousand. For the grant.
When was that?
Oh, for the O V A's.
Yeah.
Uh, yeah.
So there should be another Sigma deposit for ten thousand?
It was, it was, uh, they both the grant for.
The grant was for, uh, firefighting equipment and you had two items on it. One was.
Was it ten thousand even?
No, it's like ninety-eight, ninety-six or something, if they accept it all, you know.
And that was from who?
Sigma.
I mean, it was a grant that.
From the governor's office.
Okay.
You know.
Cause in Sigma, it'll tell me who it's from, so I, I have to know that, so I know who gets that money.
Right.
Nine thousand, if, if they accept all your people.
Okay, I will, I'll look for that.
Well, the delay was everybody had to have. The governor said she would kind of pay it by January first anyways. State didn't have the money, so.
Oh, okay. All right, so it, it may not have gone in yet, is that?
They had, that was the one, that's it.
Okay, all right. So something to look for.
So, uh, if you want to raise your bell, just. Forward your brain.
Um, in my. Things to approve, I received, uh. Invoice from Calcasas Memorial Health Center and I thought that it was for taxes, so I sent it to. Joanne, who gave it to Dee, who sent it back to me and said, that's from the general fund and, uh, so I need to have approval to pay, which I have to pay. Uh, it's, uh. For, uh, one thousand four hundred and eighty-four dollars and it's for the fiscal year of twenty twenty-three. And it says. Uh, it's something to do with their annual meeting and their budget and. There's a subsidy equal to one one hundredth of a mil subsidy will be based on the applicable taxable value. And is due payable by March thirty-first, so, um.
So that's introduced to California.
Do I need approval to pay that or?
I don't think we did that.
No, it's, it's basically their offer.
Yeah, it's, it's a, it's an approved voter.
Voter approved.
Part of that's part of it.
Okay.
The reason it's below, that is the least amount. You can tax somebody and keep it. On the tax roll following.
Okay.
If you're dropping lower net, it just disappears.
Oh.
And then you have to go back to the voters and have reapproved the allocation again.
All right. I will go ahead and, uh, pay that bill then. Um, I also have an invoice from Cadillac Door, Cadillac Garage Store. And I, I don't remember, and I looked back on the minutes from December, January, February, we, we didn't ever approve Cadillac Garage Store for work on the fire department. We had, uh. Do all maintenance. Do work on those doors in November and that was paid.
We approved the purchase of the doors, so the door.
Is.
And, and we was it. Was that from Cadillac?
I, I looked in the minutes and it was only the, the do all. That was approved. I didn't get this.
Oh, that. We started this project in September.
Oh, okay, so maybe I didn't look far enough back.
There was no perk.
So you would have brought this to the board.
I know I brought it to the board.
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
You know, the replacement of a door panel and all the.
Which, which is the amount.
Uh, three thousand one hundred and sixty-six dollars.
Because I remember you saying that.
You remember that? Okay, all right.
It was bottom two panels, because snow block.
I just remembered that we paid a different person to do the doors and I was like, I don't remember. Okay, and this is the big, okay. All right, so that has already been approved. Um, the other thing that I needed to approve or, uh, ask about is, uh, supervisor backers. Um, had purchased a thirty-two inch TV monitor that was in the heritage park. Garage and went missing.
For the cameras.
And he would like to be reimbursed for that for a total of four hundred dollars. I didn't want to just go ahead and approve that myself without. I, I know that this is under in the insurance investigation. I don't know, do we pay it or do we wait till?
We can wait. It's, it's not a big deal. I just wanted to note that that was personal property loaned to the township so that they could monitor the security cameras.
I just don't have, we just don't have a record. You actually.
Uh, when we, we got the Cobra system because there was nothing out there.
Right.
Okay, when we set it up, there was no monitor for it, so the old monitor. Wasn't.
That might be a good question for the insurance company. Being in personal property.
That's fine.
Hmm.
I mean, you know, we can wait.
And it is part of the missing items.
Make a note on the record that it was ours.
Okay.
We donated.
All right, so we'll wait on that one. And I believe that is all that I have.
I have the exact number.
Well, um, I didn't write that right here. Okay.
Yeah, so Michigan Fire could be grand for grant reimbursement. It goes for eight thousand, one hundred fifty dollars and seventeen cents.
Eight thousand.
One hundred twenty-three seventeen cents.
Okay.
So I'll give you the exact number.
All right, thank you. So it's, thank you.
So then you wanted to get into, uh, G F A, which was the resolutions for Parks and Rec.
Yes.
Okay, you have a tip on that one?
I did. I have much that I have there with yours. So there are four resolutions. Supervision part, um. Will be assigned for the trust fund grant through the D and R and the recreation.
So we're going to have to assign numbers to all of these. These are for the grant applications.
Yes. Public hearing on, uh, February.
Let's say, we had resolved a Clearwater Township held by authorized submission of. A Michigan Natural Resources Trust Fund Grant. Application for two hundred fifty-three thousand, one hundred dollars. And further resolve to make available its financial obligation in the amount of eighty-eight thousand, nine hundred.
The grants require one five or seven six.
Okay, so this would be a match if we get it.
If you get it. And it's my understanding that's there.
Of a total of three hundred and forty-two thousand dollars project cost during the twenty twenty-four, twenty-five year.
Next week.
What's that?
I want to ask a related question. Go. You got four grants out there, right?
Four.
And you're actually for a total of like two hundred and ninety thousand dollars. Right.
From the township? No, I will.
Is there four mentions we're looking at?
There are, yes, but the intent is not to provide a match for each of those. It's. Hoping that one of the brands are received and if two are received, then you can make the choice as.
Okay, so we have a determination once the, uh, grant approval comes up whether or not to accept it.
Imagine. Yes, and there's not. With your funds right now, whether the rebels are passing. If you were to receive the grant that, um, would be.
Okay, and then, uh, the second one for the Natural Resources Trust Fund Grant. Is for the applications for two hundred fifty-four thousand, two hundred dollars.
Who want to go to this project, he's starting one for the West.
Okay, and, uh, the obligation amount will be eighty-nine, three to the township for a match. For a total of three hundred and forty-three thousand, five hundred dollars. So we're talking about basically putting seven hundred grand into there. The. Township would be responsible for about a hundred and eighty thousand.
No, yeah, you're right. So realistically, both of those brands wouldn't be. Funded.
Right.
So you, you need to alter the side, what a primary project could be the east or west, but the. Township would be responsible for the eighty-nine thousand match, which although it's not part of the Parks and Rec.
Okay. So this would be for next year. All right, so that's. The Michigan Department of Resources. This one is recreational passport grant. Basically the same thing.
Yeah, that one was a lower funding amount that, uh, hit on their max funding value.
One is for a hundred and forty-three, nine. Uh. Make available local match of fifty thousand, five hundred. For a total of a hundred and ninety-four thousand, four hundred. The other one. Application for a hundred and fifty thousand dollars for the other park, the other side of the park. Okay, local match, financial commitment would be seventy thousand dollars. So these. The passport grants basically would total. Little under three hundred thousand dollars for which the matches, if both of them were approved. Would be a hundred and twenty thousand to the town. So what you're doing is scattering your seeds and hope something sprouts. Okay. So now that I understand that. We would have to assign a resolution number to each one. Individually. I'll get six, seven, eight. Something like singles.
Yeah, it's vision.
Now, for these applications. G F A is charging us sixteen hundred dollars or part from that. Is that, that, that was the contract that was the submission of these. And that's been paid. That was approved, I think, last month.
Uh, we have not been invoiced for it, I don't believe.
I, I will have to check on that.
Okay. I know, uh. I got the, uh, I got the contract and I thought we brought it up at the last meeting.
We did.
Yeah. Okay, we, you know, we approved that payment through the app, so these have been paid for, for the submission.
Yes.
That's my point.
Well, I mean, they've been approved for payment.
Okay, so if we do these. I've got passport, recreation passport grant program. I, uh. Which. We'll start with those. Yeah, those are the little ones. A little, a hundred and fifty thousand. Okay, so where are we at resolution wise or not?
I was just looking and we only did one and two online, but I thought that we had, um. Another resolution for some reason I, yeah, we, so I can't say for sure.
If we, if we number these one, two, three and four. Then when we. We get them, we can, we can assign an actual resolution.
Oh, okay, so it would be resolution, whatever number, and then dash one, dash two, dash three, dash four, okay. Oh, okay, so it would be resolution whatever number and dash one dash two dash three dash four. Okay.
Okay, so we start with the. Um, recreation passport for one forty three nine. We got that.
That's Freedom Park West.
Okay, that would be uh number one. The second one on recreation passport would be number two. And about uh the DNR uh trust fund grant for two fifty three one. Would be number three. And the second one would be for two fifty four two. That would be number four. So do we want to vote on these as a package or individual?
What I was doing because you go down the one at the height. Through that one, the one that's a bit lower. But you've already got a number one through four.
Right. Well, that's what I'm saying. We vote on these as a package or do we have to go through individually and ask?
They also have to be approved, but I think there's a package that's.
So basically, we're we're approving. Four requests from two different agencies for two different grants.
You're gonna need a roll call vote on all of them.
Okay. Yes, because we have eyes for these. Well, that's what I'm saying.
Yeah, we should do it individually.
Okay. All right, so we'll go to number one, which is uh recreation passport for one forty three nine. The township commitment would be fifty thousand five hundred. Both all vote if you would see.
Uh, Joanne Childs.
Yes.
Greg Bradley.
Yes.
Albert Keys.
Yes.
Backers.
Yes.
And Johnson, yes.
Number two. Recreation Passport Grant Program application for a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, of which the local match from township would be seventy thousand. We'll call vote if you.
Greg Bradley.
Yeah.
Tom Backers.
Yes.
Christine Johnson, yes. Albert Keys.
Yes.
Joanne Childs.
Yes.
Resolution number three. This is from the Michigan Natural Resources Trust Fund. Okay. Also, the Cameron and Trust Fund. Application for two hundred and fifty three thousand one hundred dollars, uh which the township would be. Obligated for eighty eight thousand nine hundred dollars. We'll call both it's.
Tom Backers.
Yes.
Greg Bradley.
Yeah.
Albert Keys. Joanne Childs.
Yes.
Christine Johnson, yes.
And number four. Michigan Department of Natural Resources Trust Fund Grant. Application for two hundred fifty four thousand two hundred dollars. Of which the township match would obligation amount would be eighty nine thousand three hundred dollars. We'll all vote if you would.
Christine Johnson, yes. Albert Keys. Greg Bradley.
Yes.
Tom Backers. Joanne Childs.
Yes.
I'm happy to staff the meeting or.
Uh, when we uh we'll add the title on the top.
To add the uh reservation on. Package to it anyway. So they'll probably be in your mailbox.
Yeah. Okay. I'm standing and send it to you.
Okay, so moving on.
Keep trying. We're gonna get something done there, huh?
Okay, so we got GFA done. We moved the sheriff department down. Public Safety Committee would move that up.
Yes.
Okay. So we asked the P S A.
Public Safety, yeah.
Public Safety.
All right, first off, uh, again, I want to thank the board and the people who attended this. I just a couple notes to point out here that came out of the committee. First off. We, the people, we share suitable amount of money for the. Good portion of the road and the county's budget goals to prepare. I personally don't think we should pay the sheriff anymore. That can do itself. But that being said. We understand there are people that are looking to do more additional coverage. All I ask the board to do is kind of. All that that we need commonly. They have God who do and if we're paying extra money for that, we want to make sure they're doing that though. While they're not there going enforcement, they're definitely there to help me need of going enforcement. No additional cost should be for the township. You guys sign the contract or they said, oh, it seems to be clear. I I understand that the sheriff department. Or the sheriff deputy work for the sheriff department. Within bill we spell on what their job needs are responsible for. Thank you for paying an additional trial. There's contractual obligation collective bargaining. I give that side of it, but there's things that the township can do. Where that de- deputy should not be occurring overtime at our expense. If Mr. Keys is acceptable, I do recommend that the tab or the board member. That would kind of act as. The point of contact for the deputies directly. If he's willing to accept it, it's not going to mess up on you guys. Last thing I just want to say is again that whatever the board does, if we do get somebody in there. We expect that person to do their job. That's all. And we want we want to be able to see what we're doing in the accountability. Because we're paying an extra money and. We need that respect of that deputy for all the citizens around the township. Because they are working for us.
Did you see a copy of the uh final amendment amended?
I did see the last.
We addressed a lot of those issues.
Yeah, and I just want to make sure that it's right again. And that's that's all we tried to basically talk about last week. Third Monday of the month, seven P M. We'll get with that soon. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Sheriff.
Yes.
Uh, I did go to the last meeting. Um, which is not meeting team. Uh, they did bring up some questions. Um. Has this contract actually looked at by legal?
Uh, it's been looked at by county legal.
But not nothing.
Basically, uh, the. Uh, language has been runs through the county legal department. And very few changes made to. Basically rearranging where the word. The amendments were that we want. So. As far as uh the rest of it, it's been. The same contract that we've been signing for extracurricular activities for the sheriffs. With some exceptions that they were. Less than enthusiastic about making. But. At our insistence, uh, we have a unique contract for extra law enforcement. They have uh four other counties or four other townships, five hundred townships that they do this. They send out the boilerplate standard edition. They sign it. And uh they get their extra hours in. We have conditions in this contract. Okay, uh, so as as long as Stacy, I can't see delaying this. If that's your question, Mr. Peace.
No, I just didn't. There was nothing ever brought up.
Right.
About uh legal fires. This contract going over by legal.
This was basically uh uh. Language that came up between me and the sheriff that were sent to uh Conlou. So they reviewed it and any suggested changes by their counsel. Uh, so yes, lawyer had looked at it. The county is satisfied with it. And we are, as far as we're gonna find out, we're satisfied with it tonight. Now, they changed all the uh payment information. Uh, and the amount of the contract with all those numbers that been changed. To reflect uh the pronouncing uh April first and run through January thirty first this year.
Well, there was another question.
Okay. All right, um. Well, yeah, there are now safety roads.
Did submit, um. We can register that, you know, if there was anything that go over or.
I didn't get a chance. I was fighting with my friend. I don't get it now.
I did try to get it in a little way. It didn't. Uh, real quick, I can just highlight a couple things. We just put these is. Road commission, we give, and then I'll tell you what happens to roads are giving these. Under Hill Road, uh, the permits have all been applied for. And there is a like a first draft of all the cost and everything. Down here is looking at over and he had those. That final list or whatever is gonna send it over to us. I don't, if you see all the familiar with that portion of River Street is. Directly west of the township public, it's maybe like accelerating and out fast.
Part.
I brought that attention of the air knots and a couple meetings in a row that has. We had. Help with the improvements of it. Talking about our two mill. A one million Jacksons. Um, there's we're still planning on trying to keep all the rapid city road this summer. And I was just mentioning about the relining uh. Two lanes and a certain leading.
Yeah, we need a design for that and.
Yeah, well, here's he's been in touch with dentists. Does with G F A or whatever. And uh. Well, her and down I was going to say that it's in our court to request that Jennifer have somebody to roll those. New traffic pattern.
All lined up. I did that a few months ago, so.
And he requested it to her, uh, we've.
I think they're looking for a board vote. Yeah.
That's probably the one that is. Something that says you're approving them to do.
Yes.
Okay.
And that is for.
We'll get it over there and it it's something has to be done soon because. No, they're they're bidding on that stuff right now, so.
Okay, so, yeah, I would know.
Also, just general information, uh, we said it was such a light winter and they are of course saving a little money. And you may have seen them out throughout county. Cutting trees and. They're doing all heat. Equipment maintenance and they've also replenished their salt farm already for next year. I mean, you've got uh. Some extra time in the years. All right, then, uh, at the road community or excuse me, the road community meeting last two days ago, two days. There's quite a long list of things. On that, we do have, as the last page there, a completed. Prior to France, I already has the list of road projects. And of course, that's. That it's your approval is this, you know, our suggestion is we. Looked at all the pages for all these roads that we have listed here for. Uh, address the number one and two rated roads through our township. For the latest paper rating of none, just there.
Okay, so this is by traffic? Uh, or by condition?
Point served condition.
Look back.
Length of the time that it's been since they made this down this. That took just general factors in. Came up with this. Uh, base of ratings will probably be major and spreading factor to these terraces. Uh, but you will notice on there there's a. Couple of requests for motion. We'd like to have the D N R look into. The springs and. The water conditions that I had well. Drive area, just for the fact that we mainly the limits participation from them. I mean, uh, you know, correct me all during the problem.
Some of the grant apps that can apply to both of these. Uh, infants, infrastructure from the state and D N R. One for erosion and the other one for uh drainage. So.
We also um. Have requested that you do a. A price or approve uh the two inch overlay for the point seven miles of oil road. We discussed this on a number of meetings. It's event.
Basically, it's a Band-Aid.
Yeah, um. Ten to fifteen there may be mandated, but there will be some pulver. Improvements that'll be needed or at least cleaned out. I think it's. I will just mention that there's only one road in the township that is currently rated as a one and that's Zimmerman Road. And uh it's one rating requires that the actual base of the road is deteriorating or breaking down. And uh, you know, we have the engineering study that has taken. Uh, the total fix on that was a little over seven hundred and three thousand dollars. Which had several years of tax collecting. Do that. So we're recommending that we establish is Zimmerman Road Fund. Use that money sort of. Um, at the very least, the actual construction, but hopefully we'll. They could. Find some type of additional funding either maybe uh spreading it over a couple of years and involving the bonds or something like that. Payable out of.
Okay, so basically the the two problem roads we have here that have been. For years and years and years, drainage and horse.
Yeah.
Okay, and the heaving of the asphalt. And the other thing is erosion on Zimmer. Okay, so. Coming up with funding. But. It. The suggestion was to start the actual. Separate fund.
Well, that is the only way we're gonna get enough money put aside for them.
So.
You should be able to make a speaking bond within your road knowledge bond.
Something where some.
It's all on the same column, but earmarked or something.
Or another option would be to get some type of bond and use the money that we're collecting for the.
Okay, and you said, uh. I haven't looked at the uh here on engineering report of seven fifty.
Seven hundred and three thousand. Yeah, that was done in June, June twelve.
It was suggested to me by Mark when I asked him, how can we come up with money to do Zimmerman Road? We know we've got four years of mortgages, about three hundred and twenty thousand a year. Plus the mail will go up. And he suggested go with the county road. And ask them if they'd be willing to do it this year and let us see overtime. Which is something would have, you know, was a suggestion that we do. All I can do is say no, right?
You're asking for a million dollars out of their budget. Basically.
Well, all we all we can do is say no.
Well, it's not only that, you're taking. All the township money for one one road.
We don't know. How much? Do you have? Do you know what their total budget is and the money that they have?
Well, they currently have uh over four million dollars in their. Discretionary fund, I guess you can call them. They claim that they want to. Keep about one million dollars per month for. Expenditures as an emergency kind of cushion, but. They're looking at almost five million dollars right now in cash and that.
But they would get an interest. We're talking it was suggested a low interest.
Well.
A lot of that work would be there on name.
We don't have to figure out the funding now. But we do have to figure it out. So uh establishing a fund for Zimmerman and putting the two inch overlay on oils. Basically. Put the Band-Aid on one problem. And addresses at least initially uh the other one.
That's good.
Okay, so.
There are other roads on the list too. Uh, there's, you know, little pieces here and there.
Those two are the the major ones. And then the other thing is uh the remnant of Underhill. Those two are the the major ones, and then the other thing is uh the remnant of Underhill. As long as they have the equipment there and they're gonna pave a portion of Underhill, doesn't make any sense to pull that equipment off.
That's what we've been already been agreed upon to do that, we've got their.
Well, yeah, but we need a price. So, I mean, we have extra dollars to deal with.
No, that's for the bridges. That's the matching bumper bridges.
Yeah, that's the one.
Well, that's not the.
Oh, for the bridges, yeah.
Yes.
But that only pays, that only repays a portion of one hundred, right?
Right, playing five hundred feet each direction, but there's not five hundred feet to the one direction, so they got about thousand feet.
Okay. So we can address that when when he comes up with a price tag. Alright.
Who knows?
It should be here soon.
They the.
They said April first for a start date.
On that page, there's several recommendations, can we address each one of those that he just said, and if we have to, um hold on, which ones is do that?
Well, I would say you need to hold on, we can't fund them.
Well, we want to request an evaluation, the DNR.
You can fund the overlay on Underhill. Oh, I've gone looking.
No, I'm looking at the page that they.
They're looking for an evaluation with DNR of the natural springs on oil road. Back to oil road, right? Okay, this, I'm just looking at uh. Basically, they're March nineteen.
Yeah, number two.
Number two.
Request an evaluation, the DNR, the natural springs around.
So we can, we can write off the hundred and twenty thousand for the mat for the bridges.
Yeah.
Okay, cuz that's gone. Alright, and then from there, uh an evaluation with DNR. Yeah, to to fix the drainage system.
Say, isn't it true that they did Kellogg Road because of the drainage system, so we may go get something.
Right. Well, yeah, and that being uh basically a grant request too, so. I mean, the engineering study has been done, if they fix the drainage system in there, the way it was intended to be. There would, there wouldn't be a problem, but you still have to repair the road. Okay, so uh we need a.
We want this stuff to go to the county.
We need uh uh do we need a motion to actually overlay oils? So we can, we can approve that.
You want this all to go to the county road from our township board?
Okay, so we've, we've already approved, number one. Okay, number two would be basically an investigation of uh what the DNR can do concerning oils. Alright, number three. Okay, uh request the township obtain pricing for two inch overlay of approximately point seven, seven miles of oils. I make a motion, we approve. Uh the up price request. For a two inch overlay on oils, do I have a second? Uh basically, they're just gonna go right over the top.
You're seconding them, you're seconding them.
They need to send all this to.
Right, well, basically, they're gonna clean them up.
Yeah.
Okay, so, uh. Uh, yeah, well, alright.
I need the wording for the motion.
The wording for the motion would be uh to obtain the township. Request uh for uh the pricing for two inch overlay and repair and cleaning of the culverts. Drainage dishes. The way it's. And that's gonna upset a few property. Well, I didn't do this.
Okay.
But the guy before you did.
But I'll get that later. Alright, motion by Tom, second by Joanne to uh request pricing for the two inch overlay on Hoyle's Drive. And the cleaning of the culverts. And was there more and the ditches?
Required to restore the proper three.
Just. I'm a little confused, just to be clear. Request the township obtain pricing for a two inch overlay approximately point seven miles of those road. And to include the necessary pair. Of existing culverts and or the installation of any required new culverts as well as cleaning. Of any ditches required to restore proper drainage of area.
Right.
The motion is for item number three. Joanne already seconded it, but that's okay. Sounds like a. Is that a, is that a roll call, yes?
Yes.
Alright. Joanne Childs. Albert Keys. Christine Johnson, yes, Greg Bradley.
Yes.
And Tom Beckers.
Yes.
Alright. I would also like to make the motion to uh request GFA. Do the design for the uh road commission to change the downtown from uh four lanes to three lanes.
And uh and redo the crosswalks, including the one. Uh the Almetro Act.
I would second that.
Crosswalks and left turn lanes uh downtown.
Alright. Alright, Tom Beckers.
Yes.
Greg Bradley.
Yes.
Joanne Childs.
Yes.
Albert Keys.
Yes.
Christine Johnson, yes.
Okay, so that's what they were looking for, the the green light.
Yes.
And then.
Yeah, Zimmerman.
I I was at uh. Jim, were you looking for approval of your road list? Take some time to look at it, okay.
That's something, yeah, I would say we just, unless we all understand all that, I would say if we could actually just send it to John Rogers. As our recommendation.
Well, like the two mil thing there, but we don't even see that one. So, next year.
True.
Well, no, actually. To be selected this year. Yes, the last year of uh. Well, yeah, you won't see it, it won't go on the books, I believe. Okay, so there won't be any road construction until. But what I'm saying is, is the point two mills. Uh. Yeah, well, it was, yeah, it was on last winter's taxes. Considering Mrs. Spring, okay, so and the renewal was at two miss.
So we still have four years besides of what we got now.
Yes, I I understand, um so.
Mister Chair.
Yeah.
Well, since we we've given uh broken in uh. This past, and this is what they came up with. I feel that you want to approve your that they provided to us tonight.
Yeah, if if uh if something comes up.
Are you making that actual?
Okay, to approve uh the recommended the road priorities.
Yeah, second.
And right before you approve that. Can you please read off the name of the road that you guys are approving?
Okay, we've already addressed Zimmerman and Hoyles. Walker Road, uh two point three two miles. Arwood Trail.
Point two three.
Point, point, point two, okay, yeah. I forgot the decimal, uh Arwood Trail, a half a mile. Okay, Meadowlark Lane. Okay, four tenths of a mile. Lad Road. Right, number two. Point one seventh mile. Brockmire, point, it's about a tenth of a mile. So these are all. On Brockmire, it just, you don't see what you want to do.
We we have a motion on the floor.
Okay, well, we can discuss it.
That's the recommended.
Hey, basically, what we're, what we're asking for is we're looking at this priority. For them to give us cost estimates.
Right.
Okay, so each road, as we go down the list. They'll give us a repair cost and what they're gonna do.
Kind of have, because I have the numbers what it costs for township miles, thirty seven thousand eight hundred hours. So if we have a half a mile, we'll be after that.
Okay, but we've, what we're neglecting here is. Uh the tire chip on Rapid City, we're responsible for twenty percent of that.
Primary road and.
That's a hundred percent count.
I just got a question for Mister on the view, uh your last one, uh Mister uh. Greg brought this up, on the last one, number seven, what what is recommended here?
That's tired and chill.
Also?
Yeah. That that all, sorry. It has been previously paid before, but it's deteriorated quite significantly.
So when we run out of money, we run out of money.
These are just all of the one and two rated roads, so we didn't go deep through the map.
Okay. Okay, so the motion on the floor two is to approve the local road list. As written.
Just to say there's the gravel roads were addressed too, that you can see here, so they're not left out of that.
Yeah, that's true too.
Including.
Include the second application of mine.
Okay, true. That comes out of gravel road project, so this is included with the priority list, number one. Number one. Second application of Brian's solution on the main dirt roads.
Okay.
So that would be item number eight on the road.
Alright, so the motion as amended.
Motion as amended. Are we satisfied?
I think so, now does that? Top of the owl, does that need a roll call?
Yes.
Okay. Alright, Joanne Childs.
Yes.
Greg Bradley.
Yes.
Christine Johnson, yes, Tom Beckers and Albert Keys.
This is what we're doing. Anybody need to work yet?
Oh, yeah, I did.
Okay. Roads to maintain.
Did we get everything, Jim?
Think so.
Okay.
Can I?
Hey, uh. I see on this, I know, Adam, you've been talking about Ron Lake Road needing new gravel.
Well, number one, when they paved um Arwood Trail. They put the gravel they were gonna use on Ron Lake Road and put it down the side of our road. And. Ron Lake Road never got any attention at all.
Okay, so you might wanna add uh Ron Lake to add gravel to the following roads.
That Main Street and the side road, all three of them were supposed to get regravelled about twenty times. Like I said, took all the gravel and put it on the side of Barwood Road and they had to raise that for high. Because of the water.
But just, I'm looking at number three here, it's that other roads in need of gravel are hill, Top Walker, Way Road, Town Line, Dockery, Tiffany and Kellogg.
Valley in Rapid City where there's that big pond. Right by the corner.
Yeah.
Yeah.
All of the side of the road is washed away there.
Wow.
That's, I mean, we've we've approved the list, so we're doing.
This appears to me to be a suggested list for gravel. Right, we can address this.
I would, I would ask that we send this back to the uh. Go committee and uh to address the gravel load.
Right. Reassess the gravel roads. I don't know if this. Well, it's, if you look, if you look at the bottom and says this completes the twenty twenty four thorough the township road. So we need to reassess the gravel roads.
If they do have a rating and all graphics of the, they like to adjust the word before rated ones, but there's others that need.
I know I've had complaints about uh Ron Lake Kellogg's that maintained pretty well.
I would, I would just ask the the road committee to uh re look at the uh roads. And come up with some sort of a list for the road.
That seems to do it for roads.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, we are earning interest on the roads.
If you put that on the website, that would be nice.
Looks at.
That's just in February, we got three hundred and thirty four dollars on the. Interest, interest in the Michigan class. For roads, just, I mean. I know that's a little, but it's increasing every month.
Well, I know that, I've looked at the interest on the last one. It's present, we're getting there. Uh, okay, uh fire department was written report, you have anything ahead?
There is a request.
Yes.
And right, I have on here is the, we did submit service our new air packs, uh I'm gonna say if you want. Right, thank you for the huge support for it. You can safety. Um, you know, um safety net for firefighters when they have these packs on and every set feature that hit. Um on them, um we really appreciate.
This is, we're just.
Um, we have our new cadets had two more months um in the training camp. So we, you know, they tested through past test, or we had to do that first. Um, our annual history time will be held on March thirty at earliest part at one P M. It's an annual thing to do, pretty fun event, if you wanna come out and watch the kids. Um pick up two thousand eggs and watch the mess, good times. So, um, and I have one request here um with our new. Their Bluetooth. So, um, our total rating that we have, um, being upgraded to one two. Um, so what that does is when our firefighters have their mask on and they're inside of a structure. Um, they can actually hear the radio transmission through the mask. It's actually capable, which in any like a. Finding duty gap, it's called an I O S report, and most of the time. Communication is listed as being one tractor of that depth. So I'm trying to eliminate that, um, so it's, it's twenty five hundred dollars, um, they were requesting some. Extended microphones, so that if the firefighters become trapped, they don't have to pull a radio out of the pocket. They can basically.
They wanna clip on shoulders for.
Requesting twenty five hundred dollars that we uh bought the grand driver's mobile um for those.
But you don't have a, any paperwork on that? Uh proposal?
Yeah, it's it's printed off, I just didn't print it off.
Oh.
We had other items in there, so I didn't have time to get it.
So, bottom line is you need twenty five hundred bucks.
So, motion to approve up to twenty five hundred dollars to Grand Travers Mobile for the uh upgrades.
Radio upgrade.
It's like the motion.
Yep, that's my motion.
Obviously, just next time though, before you start asking for money like this, we need to send some sort of fingers.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, I have one question for you, you still, uh, spectrum was over. Got your cameras, Mike.
Oh, Tom, we need to finish this motion.
You're right.
Sorry, Tom Backers.
Yes.
Greg Bradley.
Yes.
Albert Keys.
Yes.
Joanne Childs.
Yes.
Christine Johnson, yes, thank you.
Okay, Derek, I was on a web meeting, uh, certainly all those weird cameras, evidently you still have a wrong camera that needs to be swapped out.
They installed it to outside cameras without that, we have a major question. Right, I tried putting cameras inside, but you already have cameras on the inside, they need anything.
Right. Oh, they had an extra cameras.
They had a camera, got confused that they were supposed to put cameras up on the inside, said no, you're not supposed to do that, cameras put up on the outside. Um, so I got one phone today from Angie. There'd be supposed to be people for that, so, but, yeah, they came in on a Sunday, they installed the cameras.
Okay, Angie also had another question, are you paying, she's paying two internet bills from Charter for you. So you have two actual cable feeds, one from the TV in the lounge and the other one for Ops.
You don't have an extra, there's only supposed to be one.
Right.
Package for, uh, E N S looking for us, that's a very basic pack, package. Um, but Jamarus did tell me that he were paying double on the business internet. And allegedly, he had stopped that, you're paying over for like two to three months, but he said that he could stop that. So, but I don't, what bill is coming in on him that got reimbursed?
Angie can answer that.
Okay.
Yeah, I lost Angie.
Yes, amen.
So I don't, I don't see the problem with having an election, but, uh, I know you guys have your own internal on the inside. So what's the problem with having something that's not just internal that is covered?
It means for the inside.
Yeah, not the inside of the fire.
Right. Uh, I mean, we have cameras out now.
I know, but if they're all channels that you guys control, right? So what was the problem with having one?
Ninety-five dollars a month.
Okay, but that ninety-five dollars might be justified. You know, that keeps everybody honest too, that's what I'm gonna do. You guys control that, right? And you don't control. So I don't see the problem with having an extra camera in there, we're, we're already, it was already.
Trying to save some money, throw it in, if you guys want it up.
Right.
It's just, you know, we're spending money where we don't need to spend money. It's like, we request the true phone lines, we got true phone. They have a problem with, I mean, that's where all your fire footage is, isn't it, can you do broadside?
It just teaches everybody.
Right, what I'm saying is, that's the purpose.
Yeah, like we had one person that had access to the cameras before and then that feed just went.
So you're saying the separate system that's operated basically by the township.
Yes. I mean, we're, we're already included in the deal, right? So, just to keep everybody honest, I don't. We're probably might not know music, but I think just to keep everybody honest, we need to have a camera.
I believe we really need to look at the cost of this. Because the fire department used to pay a hundred and eighty dollars a month, but most internet, a thousand dollars a month. A fire department's all volunteer. Okay, I, I would imagine, uh, anybody that's gonna walk into a burning building has a bit of integrity. And that you guys have screened them thoroughly, okay?
Yeah.
It's not, it's not true. I think, to be honest, that we absolutely need a, a separate camera.
So are you making a motion that Spectrum installed a camera?
We're already, there's already supposed to be one. No, I guess I leave it up to the board.
Yeah, I got a real quick question, are the cameras pointed towards the exit doors on the building from the outside? Yeah, in the back parking lot?
Yeah.
Yes, there was one pointing this way. No, if anybody walked from the inside to the outside with any piece of equipment, they're gonna get, they're gonna get fined.
No, no, not that good though.
I have time, do we have an office over there?
Yeah. Yeah. Yeah.
Did you?
Yes.
Great.
Yeah. Cause we handle money, I don't know.
Because that office has been broken in three times since I've been sitting in this chair, at least.
It just keeps everybody honest, that's the whole goal here, it helps.
Plus. For the record, if, if there's ever, uh, a difference of opinion between, uh, a resident and the office staff, okay? Who said what has been recorded? So. Well, I, I, I understand, I understand what you're saying.
Unfortunately, the world's going.
Okay, let's, so are you making a motion, you're making a motion? To, uh, basically install a garage camera inside the fire.
I know that you were all part of the thought, the honesty of people were, so, that's a pretty risky job. A liability camera for a source that could work related injuries is not a bad idea.
That's not funny, somebody checking the gear falls off the, falls off the damn truck and.
Yeah, is that a roll call vote?
Yeah, it sure is.
All right.
We're gonna, we're gonna make this official.
Okay, so, uh, Joanne Childs.
Yes.
Albert Keys.
Yeah.
Christine Johnson, yes, Greg Bradley.
No.
And Tom Backers.
Yes. Now you only throw a hurt few on it, you need to have two cameras to have full coverage. Or an arm, get two bays. Well, that's the second bay. You're talking about. The other end that you're using for training, right, that's gonna get remodeled, maybe. Maybe, probably have the money. Which is what, what I basically was looking at for, uh, the urban.
No.
Anyway, okay.
Is that it for the fire department?
Anything else?
I don't see.
Thank you.
Plan and commission.
We're working that one. Uh, the township report, eight twenty one twenty four. Uh, Tony Interior Lamar asking for a company permit, uh, going agricultural.
They have to sign the, who's the second officer?
Yeah.
Okay, I forgot a phone call on that.
Okay, yeah, there's similar investigation to be done on that. The public hearing is scheduled for April first, seven o'clock, Little Ray Schoolhouse. On the three plan, commission will start looking at the township master plan, starting April first, at the April first meeting. Uh, the noise ordinance was gone over and discussed, nothing to report on that at this time. That's all of them.
Okay, um, one of these days, I'm, I'm gonna take down that zoning map. That's in the office or in the zoning office, but, uh, probably the one that's in the office. The, uh, Colin. What's his name that, that's supposed to be, uh, revamping the zoning, uh, map and making it interactive. Wants a hand drawn copy of all the changes.
I believe Tina, Tina was supposed to do that.
Okay.
I will, I will ask her where she's at with that.
And if, if she doesn't have a map, we take it out of the office. And she can pencil in, do a pen and ink change on it, so we can send that to them and we can get our new zone.
Does anyone remember the name of that?
Uh, I can send it to you.
And then that, but I will follow.
His name is Colin. I think it's, uh, environmental or, you know, I'll send you the contract. But that was supposed to be completed last October.
Yeah.
Terrible, yeah.
Okay.
Thank you.
Noise ordinance, yeah, that was just for the flaw that we found in the class summer. Okay.
There was nothing that we needed to do with any of that, right? We didn't need to do anything with any of that, yeah.
No.
Zoning report, I didn't see one. And our, uh, uh, C A A point, uh. I saw one. Application.
We have you three. Well, actually, there's two applications for zoning administrator, one application for ordinance enforcement.
I got three of them. How do we want to? Like to have them installed by April first, or not if we wanna do, uh, interviews with these people or. Yeah, I know, one, two.
It's been suggested, we've been talking to Mark. Mark has agreed to stay on and help train and it's been suggested by him. He would help with ordinance enforcement officer get trained and if we can appoint that ordinance officer, we can send them to the M T A. Training, which Mark does the training. And then he would help us get on set, set up, so I would suggest to make a motion that we wait till after that's all set up before we actually appoint a zoning officer.
After what setup?
After we get the ordinances set up, the ordinance officer trained. And, cause Mark continued helping on a month to month basis to get us set up and he is very, very knowledgeable on all of that. And I hate to lose his expertise.
At the last, uh. Session we had on the S T R, I did by. Basically, what was, uh, what amounted to the zoning administrators duties and responsibilities. Crossed out zoning administrator, but ordinance enforcement, who I know, community safety officer. The same, the same difference, uh, same responsibility. Basically, uh, if we created that position, uh, we would have a zoning administrator. And an ordinance enforcement officer, so they could split the duties, share the duties. That depends on the S T R. Fun fact.
But we need an ordinance officer for more than the short.
Well, we need a zoning administrator right now, that's what we need.
We've got one, that's willing to work month to month.
Yes, uh, I mean, okay, I reached out to, uh, Myers, which is, uh, previous, for as long as you're aware of it. He says, good evening, Mark, just a question, would you be willing to help trade and zoning, so, zoning enforcement officer? Would bring it to a month to month, personally don't seem to speak with the township for long term, and I know you don't want to just leave. Even though I don't, and would not blame you, blame you both, I realize you're in the position to move on and up. And don't need this position. What I'm hoping is, can you go month to month for six months or until you feel there that? The new zoning administrator is basically ready. Uh, would you show, take the new person out with you, basically show them a road? So the township does not have to start completely over and land with more lawsuits. I'm just thinking of the township, I respect your decision either way, thanks, Mark, for your time. Respectfully, Joe, uh. Then I, uh, said P S, no way, no, I'm reaching out to you on this matter, uh, at this time, except a possible applicant. You wrote me back, said, good evening, Joe, Lisa and I are more than willing to stay on from what you described. I believe that was said in a letter to Tom and the board in January of this year. Absolutely willing to assess the new person, uh, be it O E O or zoning admin. We don't want to leave you or the good people of Clearwater in a bad spot. If you ever need any questions, uh, please you jump. I did reach out to him, he's very, very positive, helping, still helping with the township, uh, one thing we don't want to do, we don't, we don't want to go backwards. So my suggestion is we keep him a month a month until we actually voted somebody in and then have that person work with him.
I haven't commented about that.
Uh, it's not public comment.
It's not, it's just. I don't know here, it's not.
Just wait.
So that's, that's what I did, and I think it's a good idea.
All right, so I believe that you did said twenty five hundred on a month basis. That he wanted.
They've done their jobs. They've done.
Still on.
So are you making a motion to retain him?
Well, I think I took what you're talking about.
I, I agree.
I, I think we could have paid any of what he offered.
Yeah. We don't have anybody that.
We had, we had two applications, this thing's been, this thing's been running. For, uh, at least a month.
Can we hold on to those for a few months?
Well, we hold on to.
We can actually interview them.
Yeah.
And still retain Marv.
Well, I understand that, but so, I, that was my question originally, if we wanna bring these people in and sit down and have an interview. Uh, zoning enforcement pens, the passage of the S T R.
Okay, so, fine with that one.
Bolt on the ordinance officers so we do that person to train for April.
I, I think what we should do, we, we don't, they don't even know the job description, do we even have a job description? So, I mean, that's.
Yeah. Can't hire them, that's what you're saying.
Yeah.
All right, you're talking about the zoning enforcement officer, basically, uh. It is, uh, a secondary zoning, right, but I mean, we need to adopt one.
That's right, yeah.
Uh, we can, are you have a copy of what I?
Standard procedures. I don't know where I got it, I thought it was in the packet.
I don't remember saying that.
Was it in the packet?
Yeah.
I know Mark maybe got it from Mark, cause he's been working with us and, uh, suggesting. What we need is an ordinance officer that will really be able to be here and, um.
I understand.
Go after what's.
So we need somebody that's local and doesn't live in, you mean like that?
My recognition, recognition, there would be to validate that, enable that. But we should probably vote because this is coming up, we're, we're not gonna have a zoning administrator, we don't, do something.
So are we voting to approve the month to month contract with Marvin Redkey?
Well, that, that would come up at every board meeting to renew it, it's month to month.
Well, I don't think we're gonna have anybody ready.
Well, so what I'm saying is, so what I'm saying is.
So you said six months, though.
I said six months, but the, the. The proposition from, uh, M R Consulting was a month to month contract. So basically, we, we need to extend it, or do you wanna go ninety days, under eighty days? But first of all, we need a zoning administrator starting April first. So my suggestion would be, uh, uh, to approve, uh, a monthly. Uh, contract. Or, uh, M and R Consulting, twenty five hundred dollars a month. Or period of ninety days, that should give us time to hire a zoning administrator and make a determination. And we should have the S T R and enforcement. Enforcement officer. Uh, in, involved too.
I can tell you that uh I spoke with Don Kelly and he did say that he is uh. Friends, not acquaintances with Marvin Redkey. So they know each other and Marvin and him can work together. He's the applicant, yeah. Yeah, he, yeah. He came in and filled out his application in the office. Oh, was he? Okay.
And Marv has been working with him.
Oh, Don Kelly, okay. I know. Basically, uh, base, the motion would be to hire him for a period of ninety days on a month basis, twenty five hundred dollars.
It would be nice to send whoever to the conference. There's a lot of good training. And that's in April.
If Marvin's gonna train.
Training's online anyway, but it's empty.
I know, but if Marvin's gonna train in person, that's even better. Because we're not ready with the S T R.
Uh, yeah, well, first of all. The motion would be to hire M and R. Month for period of ninety days. Okay. Do I have a second?
I'm sorry, I must.
Stand uh. M and R Consulting for a period of ninety days.
Okay. Well, to your motion. And Greg second.
Brad.
All right. Go and Childs. Albert Keys.
Yes.
Christine Johnson, yes. Greg Bradley.
Yes.
And Tom Backers.
So we're kind of going to be trying these two people.
Well, it's gonna be two people no matter what.
Okay, and again, the interview, the hiring of zoning administrator, so. If we have an interview process, when do we want to schedule it?
And does everybody have to be in the vat or is that?
You need a quorum. We would need three. So if we did around a Saturday. I mean, go on, it's twenty eighth and twenty ninth. Well, the budget will throw. Right, yeah. I'm usually available, but I'm not. That's like five minutes.
That's Good Friday.
Yeah, yes, it is.
Yeah, can we do, can we do it right now? Can we do it right now?
Do what? An interview?
Is Mr. Kelly here?
We're not gonna do an interview right now. It's already nine o'clock at night.
Adam, what's a good day for you?
Whatever day you want, but does not matter.
So we need to contact Mr. Kelly and find out. And I, I mean, we could do it. Basically, we can do it in the afternoon, during, in the office, open on stage.
So we're appointing zoning administrator, right?
Right.
Can we appoint tonight the ordinance enforcement officer?
We can't pay him.
We need to.
Marv.
We haven't created the position. We, we have no money to pay him.
In the letter we got, Marv was gonna give up half of his. His contract that he had. To us for an ordinance officer.
I think that was when he was under contract, but now he's a month to month.
But that's the estimate.
I don't know. Just, yeah, or, or ordinance enforcement.
Well, actually, I think there's could be both.
I don't know, John, do you want to do both?
If we pass the S T R.
Yeah.
And we need to enforce it, you're gonna need to.
John said he'd do both, so we have an interview for three people for zoning. Yeah. John. No, he just said he would do both, he would do ordinance enforcement and zoning.
So we have three applicants for zoning administrator. And uh one for enforcement officer. That's gonna be basically the same. And almost gonna be interchangeable actors. So uh, but in order to. Have it paid for. The ordinance enforcement officer is pretty much contingent on passing the S T R. Because a lot of their time is gonna be. Administering that program, enforcing that program and.
No, we need to import, we need zoning right now.
Be a zoning administrator. Right. And turn it on the pass. Before we worry about it. John, uh, Mr. Wester, you're available. I mean, how much of a heads up do you need to uh?
I'm good during the week, so.
Okay. Adams to good during the week, so the only person we need to call is uh Don Kelly and see if he can confirm it, so. Uh, anytime uh. Uh, next week. Uh, just get ahold of these people, try and get them all in one. In one session, one o'clock over at the stage. Get three people. Uh, for the board and uh, uh, we'll do the interviews.
Need a heads up on time and date.
Okay, alright, uh, I'll, I'll get it on that. And so. Okay, uh. C A interviews. So the only one I have to really get ahold of is uh, Don Kelly. And we'll set something up for next week and both roll through in the same time. Okay. And the next thing is. Uh, I have to come up with uh. What's. Okay, basically hourly, probably. Because we want to go back to a salary. But we can make that proposal once we, once we have. Okay, so I'll put some. Yeah, because a lot of it, a lot of it. A lot of it's gonna be uh. Uh, part time stuff, you know, like uh, uh, land use permits and special use permits, stuff like that. Applications for S D R licenses. Okay, uh, so are we finished with the Z A?
I think so. Yes.
Want recess?
Yes, please.
Okay, ten minute break.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Certainly.
But they just, you know, very bad.
I just did that.
That's your mites. But then, you know.
Well, there is a lot of fine we're upgraded to the brand.
I mean, I think it's it's ready to send to me. I got a full time, full time job and so.
Yeah.
Full time, small stuff. I know, I know. So I, I mean, I totally. I probably should call them. Oh, yeah. Well, that's still. Yeah, we just had to sign also. He hasn't come any more so long.
I thought so. Don't leave me. He makes such a decision. Right.
Yeah.
You know, he never went through a hiring.
Yeah. Yeah.
That's what I'm saying.
Yeah. I just gave the baby. They they don't know how to say that. They say, oh, we have lots of them. Actually, in the videos, I know there's.
Yeah, he's well, we have a man.
Oh, wow.
What do you know, very good, yes. That's all. But we haven't changed her to theater.
Yes, there.
It was not going to help.
So we can make sure we have that.
No, there was, there was doubt.
I have trouble with this. So they are still working on it. I have used only some.
That was Scott Gergen. Found that.
Some use.
He's very concerned.
To that, I guess.
Yeah.
I want to steal my last job because I was. I got it. So I give a big loss. The other missus. Yeah. Almost as we go into the history label, it's certainly sound. We're going more by. Let's add a more. We're not here when I need to tell you about that. We should look at it seriously. All I can do is all please.
Now, we're summertime.
You know, she advanced. You're in the beginning, it's something. You know, just want to say something. So, yeah, we're having a kid. Just point people towards that blessing. What's he doing there? I thought it was someone there. Yeah. All the time. I didn't even have type sheets. I should have assumed that. No. Yeah, because I asked what I was going to say. It's all right. There's shoes all the way to the house. This.
Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah.
I'm part of this. Of this whole. But I'm sorry, me.
That's always.
My business.
Yeah.
We don't know. The same. What if I were to sign up to go and search on you?
Yeah, kind of false.
Ever. Yeah, that's. Because I, I'm just gonna go, but I'm sure there's someone who's gonna stay involved. You know what I mean? I was gonna go and.
You gotta do it every page.
Yes, I know.
Yeah.
I wanna go, but I.
What's the place down there? Well, you gotta go to the conference. South Carolina.
That a lot. And then we took out.
Of South Carolina. Really deep.
That's please.
Right, yeah. Yeah.
Thank you so much. Of course, there should be some.
Yeah, right.
Send all three of them.
Okay, we still have three contracts.
I guess you're right, yeah. Well, I know, I know. But I would like to see that happen because that's a good program.
We're gonna get a chance to see.
Sessions going.
Yes, that's right. Yeah. Nice, now double already, sure.
That's why so many.
That's almost.
Absolutely. Yeah, that's the thing. We. We made out of.
Okay.
The agenda goes. And.
I think.
And they're all messed up after that. That's why I, I, I should have just. I would try and save the paper because, I mean, it's like sixty five sheets of paper. And you can't just, you can't skip any of it.
And they're keeping a lot of.
I don't think so either. I'm gonna tell us more. We actually. Because there's many things on that we don't need. We don't.
Well, we get to decide. That's the other thing. Do you wanna?
That question.
Yeah.
They have that respond, but they now charge for house checks. It's your time.
They don't charge.
They don't charge for house checks. Why are we paying for a contract for them to do house checks if they don't charge for house checks? They're on our time. Why is it on our time if they don't charge? I said, I can have one. The justice. We can even.
A little money and.
And.
And I'll live in.
Have we put this on our. Well, you know. Yeah. By the way, finally, I'm cleaning our job. So I gave this moment. Oh, really?
We're talking.
So you look another one and say, well, she's saying. So too, and I. I don't know. But again. I don't.
That was.
And. Brown was still done. True, he told me about it.
I would have had. That.
There's a lot. They. That's why. That's why. Well, I don't. Oh, instead of. I don't believe I didn't hear it though, I'm right across.
Yeah.
So I did that. Yeah, sure. They probably thought the building was coming down. Okay, it's nine times. Okay.
All right.
Oh, we gotta wait for Greg.
We can be. Yeah.
Yep. Maybe there's a part of the movement.
Okay, Greg, you're up.
Now.
Come on. Yeah. I can see that. He agreed because. You know.
Thank you.
We're just continuing in between those spaces where to do whatever things you do and. Make everything nice and permanent. Okay, like clean up all the. Mess I made from following. Which was a bit more than all because we didn't have ground pressure there. So everything where you just touch the dirt, roll back aside. We're continuing to do horses. So we'll release and there's that in there.
Oh.
About that. Okay. So another. Couple of weeks and we'll be in, we'll go in spring. And so something. Well, yeah, we'll. We're really. Um. You know, we should be looking at. Something. So that that will take the walk on thing. By the time I'm ready to just, you know, go ask. Um, or go ahead. Oh, well, so. Um, we are. Working to. Uh, with Andrew. To try to get the ball fields in playable condition. So that we do have some teams that are interested, a couple of youth teams and a adult team. That are interested in coming to play here if we can get it playable. Um. And the. The suggestion has been thrown out to do like we do at open gym, night is open baseball league. Maybe bring a volleyball on that outside that we used to have. For, you know, they've got that. Um. There is quite a bit of work there, I think. The lack of experience in over the last. People, myself included, with maintaining a ball field. Um, it has went, it's quite, it went, it's quite degraded from where it was. It was very nice fields for, for many years. Um, it's gonna take some work and Andrew said that he's willing to put in. Friday and a Saturday and or some hours on Friday or Saturday to do it. Um, I've talked to, we have a couple of, um. Irrigation issues that Joe pointed out last year. Um, Andrew again says with his irrigation experience, he thinks we can. Cover that about paying an irrigation company. We do have a couple of issues with, uh. One zone that runs twice and one. Day and one zone that doesn't run at all. But I. I'm not messing with my hands, I don't move anything about it. Um. We, we have a couple of weeks in the home, which is inside the pump house. Uh, Joanne has talked to George about looking at it. Um. We can't really turn any by around until it's done freezing. Um, to, to show where the leaves are. And I talked to Calcasper only. Um, the only problem with torch is. The unfreeze is gonna coincide with their habit open. And they pretty much don't do anything during that season. Exceptable. Travis outdoors, I called him, but the message no one is calling back. Yes, they're the original installers of our irrigation system. If we don't get a response from them or they're not interested. We do have a couple of local people here, uh, Jason, who has been doing the in and out service when it's absolutely necessary. Has said that he doesn't, um, he's not interested in like. Contracting with us or he has too many customers. Do you estimate those? Um, uh. We have that, we didn't get estimate from the tires. Dave Shaker's been out sick for the last week and a half. His son could not, we didn't use computer to find it. So we're, we're just waiting as soon as he gets to me, I'll get a copy to each one of you guys in the boxes. And then. Once you look at it and. Um. We got a bid or a. Or a. Snowfall. To. Or do anything. And to, uh, send all filters out. Take the. Take the. Uh, make sure it's all clean, put back together. And basically, all we have to do is when we're going to be done following the meeting. Just get over to. That's. What's that? That's on the white truck? Yes. Yeah, total twenty five. Is. There, that's an area, I don't know anybody who has the. Experience and the longevity of, of working on the files. So that's the only person I have. If y'all want me to talk with somebody. Did they give you a price, a ballpark or? He gave me, uh, you have. Um. Just like five hundred bucks for the blaze on the bow and then. Yeah, it's eight four two all together and that's within a period of part. There's a filter in it. And replacing all filters and all. And putting it back together. Lot of parts over on Melvin's. And, um, we had a break for the leaf file. Which. Um, I think that twenty in the box, but I think they'll have a proper that. That's what purpose and you got more. And.
This is the.
I think that's like on the south of dollars with the, they're bonding stuff that extra weights for the back to come back. The file and. That's gonna be.
Oh.
That'll be bad. For the cemetery. Um, we really need to play with it. I mean, I mean. We're spending too much time with the tape measure, measuring from. Spot to spot and we just had an issue where something's very involved. And we have P. Is trying to contact, uh, or contacting the funeral. To contact the lady, their wife. And let them know it works. You, I'm just gonna give you a number. He's in fifty two.
Who's looking at this.
He's maybe, and should be in. And. How it happened, can't tell you, don't know exactly when. Um. Take responsibility because I'm sure I told its measure. But as I mow, I'm seeing the little gray spots sticking out of the ground and I'll stop and. They kick all the grass up from around, so I've recovered fifteen or twenty markers in the last year. But if they're not all uncovered in their own, some of them are so good, they're alone, they're just up there. And I spend a lot of time poking in the ground trying to find them, sometimes it's successful. The metal detector would go a long way to getting. To keep us from doing, from that happening again. Um. They're not that expensive, it's waterproof, which is depending on weather and dust. Resistant, sand resistant, which is. All what we could have gone on the cemetery at any time. Two sixty nine seventy eight. Yes, Lucy. You need this one bit?
How much that included?
Um. We. Uh. We do have, we've been to talk to the Henderson family. They have a gentleman named Bobby Wookiee, who is, uh, covering up mikes. The rocks. And he is making some piles for us, we're not obligated to take. All of them at one time. Um, because I don't know what's going on at the park. I was kind of hesitant to recommend that we go with and, you know, I had a suggestion that we. That, that foot rail fence has fallen apart a lot. And we put some rocks on there, but the. Rendering we saw. Uh, is gonna make significant changes over there and I'd hate to buy the rocks now and in a year or two years. Have them have to be then taken out. And we spend about seven or eight hundred dollars for a truck. Um. We have been, got in a hold of, um. I mean, the gentleman who's doing the fertilizing, I don't know, that's for the. Parks and Recreation for the township. Because the overseeding from just the seed for the, uh, soccer field, which, um. Our grant says that we have to maintain it as a soccer field and it can't be played out. We don't even have nets. So technically we're violation of the grant. Um, but that's a thousand dollars is just for the seed and that's the cheapest. I could get it, not the cheapest seed, but the cheapest quantity that we could get. Is what it would have cost for a million thousand dollars and then a couple hours it takes to actually. Put the seed down. Um. Tom has talked about, uh, when we had discussion, the R cover of this deck. It's starting to fall apart. And my suggestion was to look into putting a. Concrete slab and I wanted to get with you about eighty day compliance. Um. I'm sure the back to do there, I've got a very basic. Picture and did some, some measurements for what our ramp is in home. And. At that. Uh, gently. It's twenty three feet, where, where we put another ramp, we have to have two doors, something like this, now I talked with one of these ladies. Um, the cemetery. To the accuracy. We, I highly recommend that we change the language in our ordinances. We almost had a guy out there during the snowfall in late January or late February, in February, whatever. He wanted to hand dig of. And, um. There's just a lot of problems with that and in our work is a no problem, but I didn't know that at the time. I thought he was digging a hole for permission. Um, we should, I recommend that we change the ordinance so that. If you dig, you can't dig. You need to get the contractor. That way we don't have. And an inaccurate. It's, it's already in the. We need to check some balances, he's very good.
Can.
He is to the point where.
He's saying, no, no.
Cemeteries, he does two hundred cemetery. And the majority of them do not allow anyone but contractors to dig. The ones that do allow, one of them has just experienced a lawsuit because they. Very in the wrong spot, they're suing because they lost the file. Nobody to find the file. And so they are in. If we don't change the ordinances, the language. We're going to lose him as our section and I don't think there's anyone else qualified in this end of Michigan. Yes. Um, it shouldn't be that hard, I don't think it's a legal matter for us to change our ordinances. And this, uh. I would say get with him and have him give you the language that he wants. Our group for cemetery management is. And then also says that like. No one should, when they do a management class, they. Recommend, and this is due MTA, that no cemetery, no, no one is allowed to dig. But a lot of cemeteries are now creating a scatter garden. A area off to the side, nicely maintained where people can scatter their ashes. Of their loved ones and then put up a little small by. To say, you know, so and so lies here. I don't know how that would work or where it would be, it's just a thought. Um. The problem is when we allow other people to dig. We still go out, not only are they. Basically taking money from. The gentleman who is always ready to come calls. But we're opening ourselves up to a liability that they put them in the wrong spot. And then it's our. And you're also paying me to go out and plot the spot out anyway. So. Thirty five or so, forty percent of what they pay for that body is going back into finding it and, you know, our orgases. And I'm just learning this, I just started doing that. It's. Why, with the verb, we will make the changes. Okay, you know, I just started doing this since September, so Pete is trying to teach me this quickly as we tend. Um. But it, it does need to change to, to cover our liability and to keep. To keep our section happy and coming back, he's good at what he does, I think that. With him, with him teaching me and then with him being behind me and being, you know, behind it. We can catch any mistakes that are made. And most especially if we can find, if we can get that back.
I know, just so you know, I did write this down, I will bring it up at the planning commission.
Yeah, sure, I can get something done well. Yeah. Just ask him what language he wants to see in her. Um. What's that? He just want, nobody, our ordinance right now says that you're only required to use the contractor for a whole lot. There, and that's pretty much the mistake. So basically we change it for all. We need to, any buried, no buried, no family members allowed to dig in a cemetery on the. Got it.
Yes.
If you're, yeah, if you're a tricky, and, and if we do wanna, um, we have some cemetery area that is too. Hilly and rough to, um. To, to dig on and to put people in, if we wanted to create some kind of a scatter garden. We could do that, clear out a few tree, put it on the bush, leave, nice, put a couple of benches in. Um, I don't think it would be that big a cost. And, and, and might also save us some headaches for people who just didn't have the money to pay. Contractor, but we, we should. Yeah, then we use all the contractor. What do you mean? Well, well taken.
Yes, for that. Metal detector, we could use it anywhere, we need to find.
First of all, it's less than a thousand dollars, just go buy it. Pardon me? Go buy it, go buy it, metal detector. Okay, I'll have Angie order it, um, okay, with her. I just, it's today, Monday, Friday. Monday. Monday morning or Monday morning? The eight hundred fourteen dollars on the snowplow rehab. Anybody have any objections to that? Go buy it. Well, my worry none is, is to make sure we don't get a big dump. And don't have.
After the season is completely.
And I'm, yeah, I'm thinking like mid April and he told me that. Because there's a lot of people that are, are doing that very thing. Um, all I gotta do is call him and bring it. And that's pretty much all we have to do, I think there's somewhere mid April.
And he.
Put a copy of his price quotation. Uh, and, and you've got one? I do.
You have it too.
And I also have. I'm not sure. So it's just on here. Okay, we've got it already. But as soon as you can schedule that. And that just has to be signed, okay, whoever filled out by whoever and then I can take that. Okay. We would that. Yeah. We got an order. Uh, the other thing was, uh. The dump trailer, did you get a? I've got a full here. Okay, okay, and I need the direction of which way to go, okay? Uh. And an eighty three inch, which is almost seven feet by fourteen foot, fourteen K. Is eleven thousand six hundred thirteen dollars. Okay. The next size down from that is a six by twelve. Ten thousand pound trailer is ninety eight, ninety nine. Um, well, we talked the other morning and as I went on measure again and. The way the bigger trailer sits, I follow everything right up onto it and we, we pop that up and put my ramps down and some one inch by, we've got the firewood to make it. But the sixty inch is gonna be really hard to get up in. Honestly, um. If you wanted to wait, they're more wanting to wait on. Um, well, I'm not gonna recommend anything tonight because I'm still looking for MIT deal. You, you know. You know.
A lot of all.
Most of these. Again, it's a lot of money to spend and we just spend. I didn't even recognize which size we think we want. But you're. The wider ones would be better. Okay, we got a six foot one. And all. That's one and five. Yeah, the seven would allow me to come up in there with, with leaves out in front of me. Um, I, you know, it would be a little easier entrance because our, uh, that's sixty inches and our, um. The, either the leaf cloud or our defector is sixty, gonna be running off sixty, fifty, eight to sixty. So you know, when you're looking at the higher dollar price one then, yeah.
So nine ninety for ninety nine.
Was doubling it up. Well, and it. Yeah, loading is easy, easy part, then you gotta get them all off. That's the hardest, the, the, not the biggest, the hardest part of all that is getting them back out. Um. Then that you get. Rather get brain to figure out how we can do it without any. Wow.
Yeah, this is something we're gonna have. We did when we cleaned off our, uh, we stripped our roof and we had to take shingles to the. We did when we cleaned off our, uh, we stripped our roof and we had to take shingles to the transfer station. They said put a pallet down first and then put everything on top of it and then when you pull the pallet out, everything comes out with it. Just something you can hook a chain to and.
And and I mean, it was workforce in the interim for sure. And 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 maybe we could find something to, so that it's been like they use.
Oh, this isn't something we have to address immediately. Okay, so what I'm getting at is what do you need for the spring? You've got, uh, the scag mounting bar, weights here.
Um, part of that is he gave, they gave us a bunch of, we went over to ask me for prices for different things. Um, part of it was, um, in the bagger system that would actually fit ours or more. And then they threw on a leaf pile under that, um. The bagger system would, is the best thing for spring because we're debashing, mowing and sucking it up. The leaf pile is. Imperative in fall because once you blow up a pile of leaves, push them upon the trailer. So if. Again, I don't know what what the budget is, I'm not trying to get.
Oh, here's what, here's what I'm driving at. Uh, the bag catcher system basically pick up, uh, any leftover leaves from.
Leftover leaves, um, is going to the ball fields to pick up the, um, the mowing, the the clippings, um. It will eliminate the need to blow the grass off once it's detached, which which is gonna save hours.
So that would be a priority.
That would be, yeah, ahead of the week, probably week.
Okay, what about this, uh, mounting bar round weight system for the scag?
Yeah, the weight system is both, um, counteract the, in the bagging system or the week.
That would be basically go on the front end to keep.
You get the bag catcher system, you have to get the mounting bar weights too.
We have to have something. Once it gets full and especially if it's wet, you have the potential to tip backwards.
And the sixty inch, uh, de-ather. With round base, so we're looking at, uh, fifteen, sixteen.
Oh, we have a.
I just rebuilt it, um, Angie orders.
Oh, okay, so we don't need that.
And I just did one day in the.
Okay, so we can cross that off.
We have, it was snowing, so what is, so I just took it apart, rebuilt it.
So you're looking at weights, you're looking at the counterweights and the catcher system. Uh, about twenty-eight hundred bucks.
And that's even, that's a new one that actually fits and that's cheaper than they wanted, but they used.
The nice thing about live on baggers, okay? You start running your bagger at Labor Day by time it snows, the leaves really fall, you've already got half of them picked up.
But yeah, but but he's talking about the badging.
Like as I start in, when the weed leaves, the softer woods start falling in late August and as I'm mowing. I'm picking those leaves up, so you're at thirty to forty percent of the leaves, I don't have to blow up or push out because I've already got.
Okay, so, uh. Looking at twenty-three, twenty-four. Twenty-five hundred dollars. He's got a net price, it looks like he's discounted the bag system. To seventeen thirty-one. So I'm understanding. We're not paying full price for that.
No, there's, um, the whatever, and that's what he said, he didn't know what the. What the percentage off we got is as the township or the government, whatever, that is just their list price, we would get something along with that. He just didn't have the.
List price is twenty-one sixty-four.
He didn't have the access that day to.
Okay, so he says the net on that is seventeen thirty-one, not twenty-one sixty-four. So we can either. We can either approve seven, eight, up to three thousand dollars for the bag catcher system. And the mounting bar combo. Okay.
Excuse me. Um, public improvement? Uh, that's, that's my suggestion. There's. Lot more in capital improvement than there is in public improvement, we've been working on closing out the public improvement.
Okay, are you trying to get rid of it? Okay, so we're looking at up to, uh, you know, right off the top of my head, I got twenty-eight, so. Three thousand dollars for the bagging and the.
And there's thirty-eight sixty-six in public improvement.
Watching three thousand dollars for a bagger. I'll second him.
Greg made the motion, so Tom is seconding that. And that's. The bag catcher system.
Bagger and weights, beggar and counterweights.
And counterweights.
We have to do is just like. Load it up and we can have it for long.
They were all you detected in to have the system on it? Okay, anything else?
Let's, uh, finish this. Thank you, that's the language I was. All right, Christine Johnson, yes, Albert Keys. Joanne Childs. Tom Backers. Greg Bradley. Thank you so much.
Christine, just so you know, let snowplow refer with eight hundred dollars.
I've got questions for you. You know, any, anytime that you need a piece of timber like that, like the metal detector, you need to bring that up like soon as you can. The chair can, he can. Thousand dollars, so that's something that you absolutely have to have.
Yeah, well, on the, the snowplow, you know, I was noticing on cutting, just as an example. And mentioned, I don't know if it was at the last meeting, I know I talked to you.
When you mentioned the metal detector, I said, told you.
Oh, the metal detector, yeah, I, you're right, I, I. Information and then I have the last couple which to.
Have you had a question as far as picnic tables, are they being refurbished?
They're going to be saying, I'm gonna sand them in spot, I have the generator, I'm gonna use the township sander. I'm gonna use my own generator, um, you guys, we have a twenty pound cylinder of propane, which is my generator when it's all. The township will pay for that, but that way I can do them on site and don't have to move because. That would, that's, that would take a half full, I mean, it would double that way that I had to haul.
Because they do, they look bad.
Um, I, I do have a game, I'm just kind of wait, I, I'm just kind of waiting for the weather to get a little bit warmer and stable. But I already just, I don't know, it was with Joanne, it was something about using mine. The, because the original thought was that I would haul them up to Heritage where we had a tris. And that's just, we were trying to assuming in hardcore.
It's an extra person.
And so I'm just gonna do them, I'm gonna do, um, Freedom right at Freedom, I'm gonna do on, on either side. Um, we did the ones at Heritage last year. We do, I can go and do the, um. Picnic pavilion there off of, um, Virg Street, I think it is, I can do those right on the spot with my generator. And that's gonna be a lot easier than. Yeah, I don't, it's already in, it works, it's just kind of waiting for it to be a little better weather. I, I'd like to be able to sand them and then finish them in the same.
Where are the rocks? I mean, can the rocks be incorporated in any kind of design, we redo there? As far as.
Ask your perk, representative.
He was talking about using it as a border and a place of offense, we don't know what the plan is.
The one spot, excuse me, the one spot that I, I do think we need them is, uh, on the. West side of Lake Street, the buying side. That fence, once you back up to that, you, you're having to unload over the top of that fence your pylons and we. It's, it's just a pain and I, I've done it there. If you go back up to the fence in your vehicle, you're out in the road and you're right on the curb.
My, that's why question would be, I prefer to the parks and rec, do you have a problem with putting rocks in that location that is the same? Make a rock, these rocks have to be incorporated in some sort of design that you.
If you guys can use them, I, yeah, we can set them up, we, you know, there's multiple places where if you just wanted to pull out and put your bark. The fences rotted, fell down or been torn down and you could just drive up in there.
Yeah, we've actually been discussing taking out all the foot rub nets.
Been, okay, was that today going down to some of the stuff that's, that was already falling down and rotten, um. The ground is a little froze to get a lot of it out back, you know, but, um. I, it's all ugly and rotten and especially along them woods. I don't know even what the point of that was in the first place because that's our property, what are we trying?
That was safely way back in the day because for the slow down, but now it's all grown trees, so I don't know that so much of a safety issue, but. Way back that was put in, those could have pushed out, but they wouldn't have been there, they're fast growing, but. So as we're moving forward with things and like redeveloping the, the player, looking toward more of a nature placey idea. Um, which would incorporate things like large boulders that kids are climbing over and interacting, so that they.
So in other words, can you get the rocks?
Okay, well, if you want some large boulders and I will get hold of, uh, dinners that have. Pull us out something like that because we're looking at the, I think you said they, the ones we first got in there between four and five. What you're talking.
Yes, yeah, large ones that, yeah, kids like to play in.
Yeah, okay, yeah, we can get, there was sword piles now, um, and some specifically for the township. Yeah, and all I gotta do is then, all we gotta do is tell them, yes, we want.
Okay, uh, so we don't have to approve the eight hundred and fourteen oh six for the plow assist, uh, maintenance. But we do have to approve paying that through public improvement, so I would make a motion that we approve that to be paid through public improvement. Does that need a roll? That's a voice.
Voice vote, on favor. Okay, now, as far as the rocks go, uh, first things first, um, Lake Street. Tear down the fence and just get a surprise on some boulders, that'd be the first thing you do. And the second thing, whatever Parks and Rec needs, if they want to tear down the fence over here on Freedom East. Okay, and and put something there so we prohibit traffic.
During the better weather, when, when and falling down, they rob that pieces, like I said, some of that ground is a little.
But it's got some, some rocks ready for, uh, enough to do Lake Street to tear that.
To do Lake Street and, and probably enough to fill in the gaps that are in the fencing at this point. Um, I know when I talked to him, uh, in Henderson's. Three weeks ago after the last meeting, um, and he said he had, uh, a guy named Bob and we keep, is taking care of it. He had him sorting out piles for us.
Go see what he's got and give us a price.
Yeah, we're here to do, um, I put a call into him to see if he can do the seating.
The only thing I had, what he brought out would be the, the decking and the cement. I think if you try to start addressing or looking at that.
Okay, I did get a price and. Prove from the capital fund for forty-two hundred dollars for composite deck. Okay, but it doesn't include the labor cost and it doesn't include any damage on leaves. That's right, so. My opinion, the character of the building itself would be reduced. By pouring a bunch of concrete rock, not to mention the rim. Okay, this is existing, all we're doing is repair. What we're doing here and basically maintaining the building as it, as we found it. Okay, so. Whatever you guys decide you wanna do, then we'll, it'd be quicker to do the concrete, I understand.
Well, and the maintenance on it is, um, there won't be any painting, we can get colored, the concrete, the concrete can be any color. But between me blowing it, cleaning it all, we don't have anything up underneath it, um, nothing's gonna rot. Uh, right now, worst thing you have is your nails that are coming up through there that if some kids are out here on the birthday party, putting on this deck and cut their foot. What do we have? If nothing else, that has to be all gone through, pulled out and put down. If you don't do anything.
So I either put a request for proposals in the paper for the decade to be replaced with composite material. Or or now in replacement done. Now, that changes the appearance of this thing, this place could soon. All right, we're either.
This is about, this is original that we've had here, so it's been many, many years, right?
Be interested in maintaining the character of this building with the deck composite concealed fasteners, everything's underneath. All right, that solves that problem. Or to get changed the appearance of this building by ripping out the wood and. And put.
It would, it would change the first. I'm just selfish and selfish.
Yeah, I, I understand what you're, what you're driving at, but we could put screening around the base.
I mean, you know, I'm, I'm, I'm for, I'm for doing something out there. Okay, and and whether it's to replace.
The thing about it is, is trip hazards and hazards too. With the, with the, with the nails and even the screws popping back up.
Yeah, it's, and and you, you could tell it was put in three different times. One part was put in.
And you'd have to deal with the railing.
Yeah, and the railing is crappy there.
So which way did we go?
We'd find out how much the labor would be.
Composite, I, I prefer composite.
Well, I know the composite material is gonna be about five grand, so. That's not the red, okay, so basically what they do is they come in here, rip everything up. Re-spring the joist so everything's running the same way, lay the decking down and then you can deal with the red.
So we're talking ten thousand in labor, ten thousand.
Yeah, he's talking probably about, uh, twelve grand to fifteen grand total.
I think, I hear what you're saying. The people have become accustomed to this and how it works.
Well, it's still a little red school.
I agree with Tom, we need to.
I think so too. I think so.
I don't, you know, if you went back to when this building was built, it would have been a stone deck out there.
I went to kindergarten here.
I'll resurrect my R M P for. I'll resurrect my R M P for re- replacing the deck. With composite materials.
Right, and I would, you know, and I think we need to include the railing. And any substructure, you know, have them come out here and inspect it, see what.
Well, site visit required. Be in the schoolhouse deck.
Say it's gonna be eight thousand, and they turn the deck off, say they didn't even follow it.
Wow. Yeah, but you don't know what's under there.
We don't, but they probably aren't there to find out.
That's it for maintenance.
Do we want to talk about the? The cleaning lady position or?
Oh, yeah. Oh, we need to put a help wanted ad out for our new custodian. Yeah.
Okay, so we need an R M P for.
Probably waiting on the weather, we have another two to four weeks. But I do believe that within that timeframe or at the end of that, that we should have somebody.
Right. Okay, so what we're looking, this is gonna be a part time uh kind of interim position. So it's. Somebody that has a. A a basically a cleaning service that that's gonna come in and do it for X amount of days and then.
We have one apart that does that type of work now. She said she would be willing to do it.
Okay.
And I said. You know, I don't know if we have to advertise for her or not, or we just, seeing how you're already a employee of the township. She works at the school over here.
Oh, she does?
Yeah.
Okay.
Doris is not coming back.
She's not coming back?
No.
Okay, so this is a full time.
It is, uh, yeah.
But, you know, like I told her.
Well, it was only if Doris was gonna come back in two or three or four weeks, like. I wouldn't have even brought it up.
Okay.
Um, it's just that we got the word yesterday that.
I seen the email, I didn't read it because I was busy doing other stuff.
That's the only reason I brought it up.
Ask her, she wants the Doris's.
Even in a year.
Yeah, she's got a long haul.
Can I have Crystal just come in and talk to your girl in the office and then you go?
Yeah.
You'll have to work around there, work with her. You know.
Well, it'd be nice to have her come in uh next week, the same time we're doing the C A R Ds.
But first of all, ask if she's interested.
We'll be up on the stage as soon.
We've got two or four weeks here that I can do.
You know.
Yeah, like I said, you've got a little bit of time for. You absolutely have to have a, be doing it, starting, but to find somebody and.
Anything else for maintenance?
We're crossing maintenance off the list, and we're back to Parks and Rec. You had some more stuff on there.
Okay, did we order the banners? Didn't we approve those last? Yes. We did the resolutions.
Okay.
They have a.
Uh, the cycling. Uh, we need to uh basically. Uh, have a voice vote for Travis City Grand Travis Cycling Club. Use of the. What dates?
Uh, that is Sunday, July twenty first. And it's the thirty seventh annual Ride Around Torch Bicycle Tour. And they would like to use Crystal Beach Township Park on Birch Street. For a food stop on the tour, and it would be from seven A M until three P M. And they need an additional porta potty. Last year, we exempted their. Uh, one hundred and fifty dollar use fee. And they request that we do that again.
That's what they said. I thought I read where they were, would supply that.
We will arrange for the additional porta jones.
So they're asking for the fee rate.
Yeah. Yeah.
But they're not gonna use Freedom Park down this this year?
They didn't say freedom.
Do we know if that day is?
They will, probably some of them will stop off in different places. But that's still, it doesn't mean.
They stopped there, but but the the pavilion is. You know, they they.
Motion to approve the request by Cherry Capital Cycling Club to use the. Crystal Beach Township Park on Birch Street. And to waive the one hundred and fifty dollar use fee for the park.
Voice vote, all in favor? Close. They got it.
July twenty first.
But after they're done with it, we'd like to know, make sure they're cleaning, cleaning it back to ourselves.
The only thing I found after the last one was uh our cameras overflowed.
Okay, Parks and Rec wants to go through their stuff.
All right, so we would like to, if it across college. Or here to the Locktonale, here is about a half mile. Um, or you cross. Party while there. Um, and that parking till wasn't rated for. It would be ours to drive it possibly.
Okay, this is what the. You want it resealed?
Yeah, we sealed. Um, and we were also talking about if in the future, we do want to use that field or like partials or something like that. Um, that we actually have a portion of it paved with a more substantial foundation. Um, to be able to say, hey, this is where you can drive across and it won't damage it in the future. Last longer, we'd almost made a second. But I just want to still need walking pathways. I'm sure we want substantial domination.
Incorporated into your overall game.
Um, so for the moment, you could be just the repairs and uh. Reseal.
So get some bids, I know, I got like five of them for doing the parking lot here.
Okay.
Uh, picture perfect, uh, black magic, uh.
Integrity asphalt.
Integrity asphalt, there's a couple other ones.
Can you, could you email those company names to us so we can reach out?
Yeah, I think I can.
Whoever invented last year, that stuff is outstanding.
That was picture perfect. Integrity is in our township, and I already, you'd mentioned it at Parksman, so I already asked him to go up and take a look. He hasn't got back to me. But that, so we'll have one coming in, and we just, I was asking Tom tonight about more.
It's perfect or picture?
Picture.
Picture perfect. And then uh. That's just another one too. Think, okay, okay, I think it's clear water, usually for basketball, great lakes. Oh, okay. Anyway. Bring us three quotes.
I might get one in the middle, but I didn't have the extra, like you talked about, I forgot.
Yeah, bring us three quotes. Because I. I don't know what needs repair out there.
Do you, you want that published, or you want to just go ahead and look those up? Get those yourself?
It is, oh, it is three bids. I mean, we could, we could do an open solicitation, but. There's. You get four, you get three. Depends on the cost, but.
Turn the bidding process.
When we did the last, I looked at every, every uh contractor. You know, for for upward fair and sailing asphalt in three towns. I got five bids.
You can um lease the ladies business that she had, well, she's running it, it was called B X Business Exchange. And they are always looking for this all over the state, and when. Two hundred and eighty people could get it, so it'd save a whole lot if we don't have to keep posting it out rapidly.
Basically, just Google asphalt repair.
Okay.
And sailing, you know, you'll come up with a list.
Okay, um, the. Estimates number twenty three twenty one from Home Service. Um, has been worked for that.
Yeah.
So we'll, we'll have to have a story down.
Do they do that?
But this is a signage. And you wanted to order the signs.
This is, this is a, this is old business. Oh, and this is my, my. All right, so moving on to C.
Can I just answer that question? I'm sorry, uh, real quick, I just found under the um policy that. Anything above a thousand dollars that bid has to be um public. Publication, has to be, has to be published, yes, thank you, sorry. On the website at the Township Hall. And bids are supposed to be sealed. If it's over a thousand dollars.
We've heard it on the last meeting, and that guy's been contacted.
Yeah. Uh, I don't think we've been following that policy ourselves, so.
And mainly because he's done it for years, he just quit, you know.
Okay, back to.
It will probably be a published.
Uh, you write it up, and I will make sure it gets published. Yeah, I'll have Angie do that.
You have a thing about seeing for the lamp post banner, we estimate twenty eight hundred and twenty. Uh, six, thousand, six hundred and thirty six thousand cents. Uh, that was approved by the board already. There is an invoice. I just turned Stevens evening.
Yep.
For fifty percent of that, so we can make that product started. Um, and that's. Was approved.
Yes, we're gonna double check that too. I would just read about the Metro Fund I sent to you guys, so we need to look at that closely. Putting lamp post in, we can. Stuff like that along the right way, but I, that's why I sent it out to you guys, because I want to make sure we can take it from there.
I thought, uh.
Yeah.
Thought that got looked up while we were in the meeting.
Yeah, Jim, I sent it out.
Pretty sure Jim said that it was, yeah.
The banners are kind of reusable, so it was more like a fix, the way I understood it.
Okay, so the money was approved for that. So you need but fifty percent?
Yes, the invoice.
Yeah. I have that.
Uh, next item was taking care of with Andrea's earlier this evening, the N B R. Applications, the resolutions that the board passed. Um, moving on to D, this is the new business that I did bring up. Uh, requesting the approval of the client's giant estimate to number three. Uh, thirty one forty seven and thirty one forty eight. Number thirty one forty seven is for the public access site regulation signs. Uh, to uh make sure that all of our lake access sites have the. Ordinance twenty areas. Um. Right, uh, all the water access points, I think there's a couple on that. One else for three, three goal, um, and that estimates is there in front of you, thirty one forty seven. Uh, for a total of four hundred and seventy seven dollars in the estimated value. And thirty one forty eight is for three signs regarding the uh. Twenty twenty three amendment, the ordinance twenty regarding alcohol. Um, we would like to order those signs, you would not install them pending the. Public Asian, if you're moving period that needs to happen, and whenever that goes into effect, then we would install those signs.
This is the ordinance twenty amendment. That was passed but not published.
Yes, the the thirty one forty eight is the sign regarding.
Which we need to reapprove. And publish. We never, we never fixed it. Has to be in the newspaper.
Well, actually, the website isn't. Paper of, well, it's part parcel. It's uh, an amendment to. The open meetings, but it has to be published by law in a newspaper of general circulation. So, yes, so I think all we have to do is just publish the event. And we've already passed.
I think there's a certain amount of time.
Was it? I think Tina said we have to reapprove it.
So it's kind of fall within twenty one days or.
Then, yes.
Okay, motion to approve a. Alcohol use amendment. To ordinance twenty.
Do we know?
Reapproved.
You're seconding that? Okay. All right, uh, does anybody know that amendment number?
I have to go back in minutes.
I think I have it in my email, but I'll look it up.
Ah, Margaret knows.
I want to say something before you.
But as the deputy, do you have some guidance?
Well, we got a motion on the table that hasn't been voted on yet, so they, you're open to discussion. Yeah, well. Kidnized.
Okay. I know that the um heritage group, so that's a whole, they're kind of on the facilities. Not at a park, but on township property. Does that resolution cover township property as far as?
I know it was parks, but I don't remember.
The wording in the order says that essentially, it doesn't matter what you call the property, you can call it an access or park or whatever, but it's all pretty much the same. From what I remember, yeah.
Township property, township property.
Right.
Thank you. Okay, so. Tom made the motion, and Greg seconded to. Uh, reapprove of the amendment to ordinance twenty regarding the use of alcohol on township property. And that is a roll call?
Yeah.
Okay. All right. All right, Tom Backers?
Yeah.
Greg Bradley? Joanne Childs? Albert Keys? Christine Johnson, yes. And we uh get notice to Tina to make sure she knows that we just reapproved that, so that can be published. She's the one who does the publishing. For planning.
I would also like a big motion that we accept two estimates of thirty one forty seven and thirty one forty eight for signage. Uh, for the parks and reps.
Um, my question on that, just a little discussion, uh, do they need? Board approval for purchases under a thousand?
Basically, uh, I think when we originated the Parks and Rec free Rec Committee, I gave them or gave them permission to spend up to five hundred dollars.
Okay, so these are all under these are under five hundred, so you didn't even need our approval.
Okay.
Conflicting information, you were saying regarding that?
Oh.
So, yeah, that's why we're fairly different today.
Okay. You you keep it a support. Oh. I'll I'll make a motion. Let's make it official, okay, that uh any purchase by Parks and Recreation for five hundred dollars or less need not be approved by the board.
Oh. I think Greg was first. That's who I heard. Up to five hundred dollars.
We do want to see the bills.
Yes. Well, they yeah, they can't pay it. I have to pay it.
So the request go to the clerk.
Okay, would that be a voice vote?
We're dealing with public funds, yes, both of them.
Okay. Greg Bradley?
Yes.
Albert Keys?
Yes.
Tom Backers?
Yes.
Joanne Childs?
Yes.
Christine Johnson, yes. There, now you have official approval. And you heard it yourself.
Okay, um, just some updates for the community events. We will be co-hosting a charity one month workshop in Seatsaw, which is a conservation district. Uh, March twenty third, one to five, right near Little Red Schoolhouse. Um, and then I both as chairman of the committee and as a ten for volunteer citizen. Uh, Danny Peckery just has a meeting and we have an agreement with the township for Freedom Park West. Uh, there's a dugout that's built up to try to be used a lot of the use of his life there. And those are all getting taken out as part of our uh fire and heat waves. And he informs us of graffiti on the backside that's visible from his property. Um, and he asked that we try to get moving on getting those dugouts taken in whole.
The fence is gone, so it's no longer a baseball field, so the dugouts are academically.
Right, and he had mentioned that he was willing to do some of the work as well. He could do it. He didn't want to um have conflict with the township and, you know, somebody out there with a sledgehammer or whatever. Um, I had myself also talked to him and said I'd be willing to go out there with you know, a sledgehammer and get those knocked down and, you know, we can get a trailer to get the the refugees out of there. Um, I just wanted to make sure that with it being township property.
We need a waiver of liability for anybody that picks up a tool.
Okay. But I would have to take those up there. And that's that's all I needed to know, um, to get the liability sorted out.
If you really want to send right, you want to introduce that or contract to the land and might be down here.
The town. Um, yeah, we were looking at this. Did not have.
There was a volunteerism. Anyone know?
Yes, sir.
Our part of the project also is 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 uh removing the fence, but moving the fence forward to the line, so the fence itself isn't going to go away. It's just going to be moved to the property. Right.
Right. So so basically, uh, we'll be legal. We'll be on our side of the fence. You'll be on your side of the fence.
Um, and then I just have one more question. Under new business, uh, section C contracts, there's zoning parks. I didn't know that was a payover, or do we have contracts to sign with park?
Uh, no, that was basically, uh, what I was looking for. That was left over from last meeting. I didn't change it. It was the uh agreement with GMA to proceed with the grant applications.
Okay, alright. Okay, the Chinese uh report is complete.
Let me tell you, I don't give a color move to all heritage ball field movements.
Right. And the sort of city. Right.
Yeah, that was Craig talked about that. Um, we've kind of been trying to hit it from multiple angles.
I think so. So Steph's son is interested in helping out with the ball field and Zach out of the other.
I it's gonna, I I put out there, we need someone to manage and he answered, okay? He may he's he's done that before, the lines, he's willing to take it over. I feel like parks, if somebody should give him something. I mean, that's a lot of work. He's he's gonna contact people to get to use it. It's gonna be a job because he has a heart for it and he wants to be able to get it working and he.
I got it. So we're looking at. Yeah, we're gonna work together. Very good. Three ball fields are gonna go on a bounce. Now, the worst question is, should we pay him? He doesn't drill. But he's a
This is man, this is actually managing, contacting teams and all that. I don't, you know, get the get the lights up and going.
I think we're talking about, I think we're just talking about getting the ball fields in order. I thought that's what those whole things was for.
But also manage it. Get people to let us know. Advertise it.
First get the ball fields.
Yeah, let's take care of the grounds.
The main thing is, we have to get it out there right now that they're gonna be play playable and he so he can contact.
We don't have, we can't say that right now because it's not.
That's why we need to do it tonight because people are already choosing where they're gonna play.
So they 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 call up and want to reserve the ball field for this summer, we can tell them they'll be ready.
Connections, he's told me what he could do, so I'm just whatever.
Okay, well. Need someone to do it. If we need to make it a position, we can take it up.
Maybe parks can take that up.
Work with Eric and Ben as long as they don't open their baseball fields up until tomorrow day weekend.
I know, but average, we don't have anyone playing. We have anyone played for six years, so we need to say, yeah, I've talked to, I've talked to Todd Hardger's wife. She does a female team and.
Get them in order first.
Huh?
Let's let's take care of the fields first, don't worry about manage.
No, they want to know right now. They're.
Well, he's he said he's gonna do it, right? He said the only question is whether we pay him or not. So can we determine whether we pay him or not later?
Ask him to manage it. You don't know how long it's gonna take. Or they won't use if we don't get it done.
Let's get Heritage.
That's a budget question too. Does it come from parks budget? Does it come from the township?
Like you said, the soccer field, it's gotta be defaced, it's gotta be uh fertilized or it's uh basically uh. Get some warm blood with it. So insecticide or something that needs to be. So all of this stuff that needs to take place, the ball fields themselves. We need uh some help with things to get them in shape to play on. Dance the priority.
Yeah.
Just so everybody know, we've already bought the bases and every right. We bought the horrible pitches and all and never used them.
He just died.
Right. So.
It's covered according to all suits.
Well, uh. All right, he needs our approval, our approval to use the township equipment and a waiver liability. Okay, and the other question is, do we bancurst?
And who pays him?
Mm hmm.
And who pays him? Does the township?
He did not mention.
Do you want to pay him?
All I just to do a a big job. I
Oh.
And be able to be there when the teams are there, align them and do whatever. It's.
He didn't request money, but do you want to pay him?
I.
Talking about getting the ball.
You guys can talk about that at your meeting. How's that sound? Okay.
I'll contact Andrew and um I'll have a little meeting with what he would like and.
There you go. Awesome.
I just wanted to say, yes, he can do it.
Yes.
Okay.
A request by Heritage Festival Committee to hold their event on township property. Do we need to approve that?
We talked.
We talked about it, but we didn't.
Last meeting, uh, basically, uh, motion to approve the uh grounds township grounds behind uh to the north side of the town hall for the Heritage Festival.
And Heritage Festival, um, they want it for the Thursday's house.
Uh.
They want to hold it clear that way.
I think what the holdup was last time.
So Heritage Festival and evenings?
Uh, yes, uh, Thursday evenings and then, uh, I don't know when the what?
Twenty third. Something like a twenty plus. I don't know.
And uh, here it is.
Thursday, July eleventh, five consecutive Thursdays, seven eighteen, seven twenty five, eight one and eight fifteen. And then the first day of the festival is eight twenty two. So Tom made the motion. I'll second that motion. Is that all in favor?
I'm in favor.
Bye.
Opposed.
You're opposed?
No.
Oh.
I just said may, I said I.
You're sleeping.
Delayed, it was just delayed.
Uh, approval for permission to use township equipment to maintain the Heritage Park baseball fields.
For uh Andrew's thoughts. For further. Okay.
You shouldn't be, I don't agree. Managing them is a separate issue.
I sent you all an email about the insurance.
Okay, so I have motions, fact, all of all in favor?
Bye.
Opposed.
I'll go first.
STI review date, I would I would suggest we move that on to our twenty ninth meeting. Basically, we'll pick a a weekend and then wrap this for all.
Uh, we need to approve the assessor contract.
Yeah, uh. I don't have, I got contracts down at the bottom, but I didn't.
Oh.
Accessor.
Oh, you have her under K.
Got it right here. Okay. Uh, basically, it's a three year with a graduated fee. Independent contractor agreement. Basically, doing her same job for more money.
Make a motion to get higher.
With the other townships are having difficulty finding an assessor, so yes.
Well, she does five townships in this county.
But she's not taking on anymore and she's uh thinking of dropping some and not us because she sent us a contract, so.
Yeah.
If I deliver her mail to you.
Okay, so, uh. Motion to approve the uh contract agreement with Don Coons.
Wilson?
Uh, what's the LLC?
So.
A and D Assessor Incorporated. For the tax years, it's one of five, uh, twenty four, twenty five and twenty six.
Oh, I just wrote asking, I'm sorry.
Yes.
They got their business. Everybody in here. Okay, did I did I get a second?
Uh, Joanne seconded that. So Tom Backers?
Yes.
Greg Bradley?
Yes.
Christine Johnson, yes. Albert Keys? Joanne Childs?
Yes.
Okay.
Christine?
Yes.
Can you look at your all family people still?
Uh, there's still two people on there and there's still two people on Facebook. I'm so glad you guys are hanging in there. Okay. It was.
Yeah, I'm in. So when you get the who's the invoices from the shop or the tree tree is coming up in cemetery?
Uh, no, they were already approved.
Did we move that sheriff's contract down all the way down to the end? So we got it on here. The sheriff's contract? Uh, yeah. We moved it. Well, wait, the side of the seat, I've been on here twice, so. Yeah. It went the. I think uh was for the sheriff's report, which was written. Um, I think we skipped, uh, yeah. Contract approval was way up there, so let's grab that one too.
And the GFL contract.
Order, babe. Well, we also got me the contract on the park that sure on back page. Yeah.
Yeah, I'm finding all this uh the back and the front. He's trying to save paper when it comes. Looks like we still have it.
Oh, yeah.
I'm getting it to the old woman and find the one that's in.
I love you. Living. I don't know.
Yeah. Long enforcement. Long reason.
Thank God, I know. Wow. This has been the longest meeting. Well, before you were here, we had blunders.
We've been on like a lot of the right.
Somebody else could send them up.
Is that where we're at?
Let me see that sheriff's contract.
Well, you know the other thing I'd like to add, starting with your contract, I'd like to see uh it was viewed after six months period, I'd like to get reviewed with the board.
We can do that.
The safety committee and representative from the sheriff's office.
Yeah.
I mean, that way we keep everybody out when we open up.
Just get with the schedule. Yeah, that's just, uh, it's on our thing. But the the fact of the matter is, with the suggested changes accepted tonight, uh, the uh sheriff's department and long through the county legal council. If everybody have got April twenty first or April first, twenty twenty four through December with the numbers filled in, the uh basically, the uh overtime issue was addressed here.
We're getting what, ten hours? I would like most of those ten hours patrolling and not coming to our meeting. I think that can be put on the webpage with reports. And not doing the ordinance thing. Because we don't need that if we get an ordinance officer. They can uh, they can uh, there are just things that I would rather see.
They they if if the or if the ordinance the zoning administrator, well, the only reason that's in there is because uh uh one of the contractors got absolutely hostile with Lisa.
Oh, that's right, yeah.
Basically, I don't think they would do that to uh uh one of our failed contractors. But in case somebody gets belligerent, we, the zoning administrator, has the authority to contact the sheriff's department and request an escort to service a complaint or legal papers upon a violation.
But what we really are at, what the people want, because we've got a list of how they come here. I mean, they're here every day. And what what I want to see is that the people want patrolling. We want to see the road patrol. We don't want a time taken up.
That's what we tell them to do. We can uh far as, you know, just like you said, the reports can be. We get ten hours a week, okay? Basically, when the deputy shows up, we tell them what we want, what to see.
We don't want, you don't want to come here and take up time.
Sheriff actually directs.
Yeah, we don't have a say.
What I'm saying is, if we find it is time here, we need to spend road patrols. We would say we would like the road patrols time the school lets out or that during the summertime.
We still don't have.
Or.
So we we would have to contact the sheriff. The sheriff would just.
Well, basically, yes, that's what you do it when when we have the sheriff's report at the meeting, deputy standing there.
He'll take it back to the sheriff.
Yes. We select and direct what what we would like to see done in the township through the deputy.
We can say, but they have to. We can say, but they have the sole discretion.
That's why I think we need to review this, this contract after six months.
That's fine. That's fine. They didn't wanna modify it at all, this has been sent back to them three times. Okay, and they have accommodated to this point.
Still haven't answered all the questions.
What has happened in the years past?
Okay, so we either delay another month. Okay, rewrite this contract.
That's my.
I'll do whatever you guys wanna do.
No, there's. It's not in the budget and that question has never been answered.
Well. You're saving thirty grand on the zoning administrator.
What that could be for the ordinance.
Months for for twelve months, fifteen thousand dollars, what was he, what were they charging us a year?
But we're hiring the zoning administrator being trained by.
I I cannot see hiring zone administrator and the fourth officer at the rate that we did because we're thirty now. All that's up to negotiation, whether it's part-time, full-time, pre-ruined salary or by the hour. Uh depends on the STR uh getting passed, whether we hire a second one and which days. Okay, so right now, we're discussing the sheriff's contract.
But we're discussing how we're paying for it.
Yeah, you're also assuming that the STR is gonna go forward.
No, I'm not assuming the STR is gonna forward, I'm saying. The contract for M and R Consulting was forty-six thousand five hundred dollars a year. At twenty-five hundred a month, for ninety days, you're spending seventy-five hundred bucks. And so we're not paying four thousand, whatever it was.
Again, and there was a lot more in that price from them. When you look at all the work and the grants that we're gonna do and all that stuff, we never use them, we end up getting bored of Frasier. Instead of allowing them.
The township will pay based on a forty-hour work month. Twenty-one thousand six hundred and three dollars and sixty cents. For a period covering April first to December thirty-first, then you add on to that sixteen thousand ninety-five dollars and sixty cents. January first through March thirty-first. Another five thousand five hundred and eight, there's more, it's not just that. Is it sixteen thousand? April first through December thirty-first, twenty twenty.
That's where, that's where contract.
This much and then. What, resulting in a monthly payment for a period covering? So is it sixteen thousand ninety-five dollars plus fifty-five hundred and eight dollars and that totals twenty-one thousand six hundred and three dollars? Is that? The cost? Not including overtime.
We didn't have them at all last summer and we didn't hurt for that. They were still here.
You didn't get the phone calls. I got the phone calls.
Anyways, okay, so I'm looking at twenty-one thousand six hundred dollars that we need to come up with to pay for this contract. And even though you're talking about saving money on zoning, are we saving twenty-one thousand dollars?
Can I ask you, Tom, what were the phone calls about that you got?
Mostly.
Twenty-two thousand.
Okay, but our ordinance officer will be able to deal with all of that. Unless it's a crime and then they will have to.
Our news officer can't write parking tickets or.
For trespassing, if they get a call, nine-one-one, call somebody's trespassing, they have to come for that, that's not.
They're here every day. My, I questioned at the meeting last night, they're here every single day. You look at them. They're in the area. I would think if they see. I think so.
The budgets. Not able to be, in fact, our starting number, I don't even. I mean, if you look at what our balance is right now and we're estimating that we're gonna have two hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars at the beginning of the next fiscal year. We have about eight thousand dollars in the general fund, not two hundred and seventy-five. I know there's more, isn't the county, don't they have money that's supposed to come in for taxes that hasn't been?
We get it off and on various times. Because we can't continue the research.
Yes, we do.
But you can't.
Yep.
Sustain a contract with a limited fund. And if you.
Worried about paying for it.
You you're only gonna pay for it one year out of ARPA and then see what happens next year, is that what you're talking about?
Yeah, basically. You wanted, you were, you were talking about moving the ARPA funds to the general fund anyway.
We gotta find out if we can do that.
Lisa said she would talk to, because ninety-eight percent of the townships have done that. And um she's gonna talk, I said, can we talk to Christine about it, so they just have to.
I'm okay with taking another ARPA funds.
Yeah, well, I mean, it's it's legal, it's one of the first things listed.
We see something.
Yeah. All we're doing is budgeting for basically nine months out of this year.
So can we, can we just say six months? April, that's the.
We, we can, we can do what we did last year and suspend the contract at thirty days' written notice.
Well, that's already there, it's already in there.
I know that, she's saying six months, she wants us to run this back through the county, through county legal. And delay it for another month. You just terminate the contract.
She can follow up and make sure that that's all happening, who's happy, who's gonna be in charge of that?
That's why I'm saying we can reconvene in six months to see this is actually working.
If there's a problem with the. On the six months mark, there you can decide whether you wanna get a thirty-day notice for all the money. If anyone, and uh. I think what they're doing and. Well, the fact is, we can cover this contract with the ARPA funds, it's qualified use of the money.
So we would save from the zoning money, right? Because we're not paying MR fifty, forty-five.
Anyway. Motion on the table to accept the amended sheriff's contract as it's been submitted.
Hold on, I didn't write that. I was really dumb. Um if you're gonna make a motion, it needs to say where you're paying it from.
What's that? Oh.
What do we pay in the uh zoning amount?
That's that's uh basically allocated in the budget. Yeah. Okay, uh actually, the sheriff's uh uh. Contract uh motion to uh pay that out of the ARPA.
If it's, if it's legal.
If it's legal. You're going.
Saying, yes, they're saying no.
Who's saying no?
I don't know.
Not what I read.
Was there a second for that?
Police and fire, it's ba- basically under the community. That was the basic one to start with and that that they've refined it a thousand times. I keep moving the gold. They want you to spend the damn money. Yeah, they they want us to do. They're better than half of it still to thank someone.
But we don't wanna waste the money.
Yeah, that's like about it, it's like, uh was it Milton Township?
Okay, we have a motion on the floor. Uh roll call vote, Tom Backers?
Yes.
Greg Bradley?
Yes.
Albert Keys? Two inch outs? Christine Johnson, no. Motion carried.
Okay, so as of April first, we have. A new deputy, deputy dedicated to the downtown for ten hours a week.
We will get a replay when he's here.
So uh. Just uh one comment, if it turns out that we cannot pay through the ARPA funds. We'll have to cancel the contract because there's no other way to pay it.
Unless it's from the zoning that they're giving back to us, when I, if we've, if we've got, what did we put in the budget for zoning? It was forty-nine something.
Zoning administrator contract is forty-six five.
And we moved their legal expenses to the township general legal.
Yeah, so that's all just their contract. All right, GFL?
GFL. Probably lose the rest of the, well, I'm done. I've had. I gotta replace a gas tank in my.
I think this is the last thing. Everything else has been looked at.
The cash value of the breaking entry uh inventory. Let that hang. Uh budget approval meeting. I have the packet, do I have to add up all the?
Yeah.
Because I I haven't had.
But but I had your.
Great, um. The ARPA fund, uh GLA, uh basically, I spent on my. Somewhat dusty email over there, June twenty-second. Yeah, thing, and then I got a call back uh two days later from Dylan. Who basically apologized profusely and said, May fourth is fine.
Yes.
So it's.
So we all know there are other ones up there, I found out.
Anyway, uh so May fourth is cleanup day, I also contacted Kevin and Arietta. So uh uh Dirk heating and cooling will drain and certify uh refrigeration. Uh cooling.
Oh, nice.
Anything that somebody wants to bring in a air conditioner, freezer, uh old refrigerator. Uh take it to Dirkies first, uh they'll drain it, recover the uh refrigerant and send them on the way over to.
What, what cost?
Hmm?
What cost?
Uh none.
Oh, really?
Okay, so I'll make the motion that we approve the contract with GFL for the May fourth spring cleanup day.
All in favor?
We can't do that, it has to be roll call. It's money.
Oh, it's contract, yeah.
Nice try, Tom. Greg Bradley?
Yes.
Albert Keys? Joanne Childs? Tom Backers?
Yes.
Christine Johnson, yes.
So Parks and Rec will have to get uh organized volunteer wise in conjunction with our maintenance crew. And any volunteers because we have to check residents. And for hazardous materials.
Um the trailer that I talked to Mike Randolph and they could, I think it's gonna be here for a couple days. To pick up tires.
Yeah.
And they could use volunteers too. Yeah, I thought I might be getting baseballs or something.
I'll sign that and get that sub done.
Okay, any further business can be moved to a later day. Entertain a motion to adjourn. It's Friday. Uh basically, we do it six, six P M. Well, we wanted to do, yeah, it's Good Friday too.
I can't do it Wednesday night, but you guys can do it.
Remember when uh.
Easter week, I have good, I have Mundy Thursday, I have Wednesday night Bible study, Mundy Thursday service, Good Friday service. Saturday is quiet and then Sunday Easter celebration all day. Easter egg, huh, yeah? Oh, all right.
Everybody's still with the budget, we just need a call.
Yeah.
So what works for everybody?
I'm out, but you guys can all nab at it.
You don't have to do it in the public, public and all that then.
It's been.
Have to be posted as a meeting, we can meet here. Uh we could do it uh Friday at noon.
Make Friday at noon.
I can. You can't, gone.
Gone.
Well, on Saturday at noon or ten A M.
Have to be Easter egg month.
Uh.
After the Easter egg, right?
Easter egg starts when?
Ten, it's at one, one o'clock.
Okay, so you have time before.
We could do it in the morning, we do that in the morning.
I can probably do that on the morning, Saturday.
Okay, so Saturday at one?
Next Saturday. Oh. Do it in the morning.
Have to do it in the morning, ten A M.
Ten A M.
I can make it, can you make it?
I have to.
No.
Try it.
No, can you make it?
No, we could do uh. See, but the thing is, is supposed to have thirty days between the publication of it.
Oh. When did it get published?
So we've already got this up for the twenty ninth, right?
Yeah. Because usually.
It has to be done before.
Usually, it's the day before, but it's March thirty-first, the day before your budget goes. Okay.
What, what time?
We said that was a Friday.
I think Amanda's meeting time, the twenty-ninth is a Friday uh.
Could be better, all those Friday services. In the afternoon.
Okay, so if you wanna do it at ten o'clock and just add the form, do the budget.
No, no, we gotta have a term, he's gonna be gone.
I can't do Friday. Barbara come in my stud Friday?
No, yeah, oh.
I didn't think so.
Friday night?
Friday night, six o'clock.
Okay.
Okay, so twenty-nine sixty.
Twenty-ninth at six P M.
I forgot, I also promised to and I don't know when I were going. Mornings are really bad for me.
Okay, uh motion to adjourn, I guess.
At ten fifty P M. That's why we couldn't figure out today, hey, thanks for holding uh in there and uh staying in. That's why we couldn't figure out today. Hey, thanks for holding, uh, in there and, uh, staying in the meeting. Have a good night.
Only while I talk. I hope we have another.
Public comment, Margaret, do you have anything else to say? Everybody else is gone.